Broadcast has been set.
Good evening. The time is now five P M and I'm calling to order the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three Policy and Governance Committee meeting. We are on an on-time committee, and so we start on time to make sure that we can take care of the business of this committee. My name is Walter Field and I'm Chairman of the Policy and Governance Committee and a member of the board. Brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, and I look forward to the important work that we have to do tonight. We'll now have introductions of the committee members, starting with board members, then administration staff that have joined us, including our guest speakers, then board office staff, and the board legal counsel. So we'll begin with our vice chair of the Policy and Governance Committee, or Member Briggs.
Thank you so much, Chair Fields, and good evening, everyone. Jonathan Briggs here, District Two Representative and Vice Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee, and I'll hand it off to whoever's next.
Board Member Miller.
Oh, good evening, everyone. This is good. Am I off of mute? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, good evening, everyone. This is Dr. Juanita Miller.
That was quick. Okay. Committee member and Board Vice Chair Lolita Walker.
Hi, everyone. Greetings. This is Lolita E. Walker, and I'm the Vice Chair, and I'm excited to be here tonight. Let's get to work.
And we have our Board Chair Judy McInnes Murray.
Good evening, everyone. Judy McInnes Murray, Chair of the Board and ex-officiare member of this committee.
And now we'll have introductions from administrative staff, and I see our Superintendent, Mr. House.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. It's good to be here with you all this evening. Look forward to listening and learning.
Thank you, Superintendent, and I see Chief of Staff, Ms. Boyd.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Quincy Boyd, Chief of Staff. I also look forward to listening. Thank you for having me.
And we have Ms. Welsh.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ms. Welsh, Robin Welsh, and I'm the Director of Government Relations, Compliance and Procedures.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh, and I see we have our guest, Mr. Zuckerman.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Andrew Zuckerman, Chief Information and Technology Officer, here to support one of the policy items. Thank you.
And then we have our Board Counsel, Mr. Whitley.
Good evening, everyone. Dennis Whitley III, with the Law Offices of Shipley and Horn.
Colleagues, before I call for a motion to accept the agenda for tonight, please be aware that it will vary slightly after item two point O. We'll talk about item four point one, a discussion of policy zero one one seven, information technology services and information security. We're doing this to make room for our visiting speaker. They have a motion to adopt the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda.
I move to adopt the Policy and Governance Committee meeting agenda for October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Is it's been seconded by our Vice Chair, so it's been moved and seconded to adopt the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The agenda is adopted. We will now move on to item one point four, approval of the committee meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the September twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes?
I move to accept the twenty twenty, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved. Thank you. Dr. Miller has been properly moved and seconded to approve the September twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The minutes. Item two point zero, public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. Ms. Adeline, do we have anyone registered for public comments this evening?
No, sir.
Thank you. For the public that is watching, I encourage you that when we have our committee meetings, that we would love to hear from you. We'd love your input because these policies are not just words on paper. They are policies that affect the students of the Prince George's County School District, and we need to hear from you before we implement these policies to make sure that we take in consideration your thoughts and views as we move forward. We're going to item four point one in our agenda, which is policy zero one one seven, information technology services and information security. I yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to introduce our guest speaker and provide an update on policy zero one one seven, information technology services, information security. Ms. Welsh.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce our guest speaker, which is Andrew Zuckerman, who is our Chief of Information Technology Services. And I thought maybe what we could do, and certainly, Mr. Zuckerman, if you think differently, please tell me, we'll change. But I thought maybe what we do is go over the policy first, and then, and when people have questions, that you are the perfect person to answer the question. It won't take much than a minute to get through the policy itself. So Cindy, would you mind post, putting it up on the? Okay, this is a revision to the current policy that is there, and it's to really update the things that we need to do in order to ensure that we are safe when it comes to our technology, information and communications that we use. So the the policy statement was slightly changed to basically put a commitment statement in there that it says the board is committed to ensuring effectiveness, safety and soundness of the Prince George's County Public Schools Information Technology Services. And then the board also believes that it's important to put preventive measures in place to protect sensitive information in electronic format and maintain the safety and privacy of individuals. So the purpose of the policy is really just to promote cybersecurity in all PGCPS electronic communications and accountability for our data and our information assets. So if we can go forward, if we have two definitions, which you will in in the standards, you'll see something related to principle of least privilege. And what that means is that you, the, basically, as an employee, you would only get the, your access rights to what is strictly required to do your job. You don't get anything beyond that. And then role-based technology access is a security approach that really authorizes and restricts system access to users. And again, it's based on the role within an organization. So it allows the, like, the employee to use the data and applications they need to use to fulfill their job requirements, but it minimizes any risk of unauthorized employees accessing sensitive information that they don't need to perform their their task. And then these are the standards below. So prevention, system prevention responsibilities. That would be, okay, implement appropriate measures to ensure confidentiality and integrity, availability and accountability of the data information assets, both in electronic and physical formats. I do want to point out that the administrative procedure will go in great detail in terms of how this will look and what will need to be implemented to be able to align with this policy. The next one is monitoring, archiving, audit and purging the contents of electronic communications files, other materials created and stored using the district's technology and data transmitted across the district network. Networks. So basically, we're ensuring that we only have what it is we need to have and not additional access information. The next one, this goes to the definition we just read, provide role-based technology access to users using individual account credentials and the principle of least privilege. So no one gets access to anything they don't need to in order to do their jobs. The next one is securing that the network and the physical access to the data centers and technology infrastructure. They're going to secure those against any authorized access. And then the next one is accounting for the district's technology equipment at all times and disposing of it in accordance to the National Institute of Standardized Technology Media Sanitization Guidelines. And of course, the purpose of this is you don't want to be taking someone's computer if they've, you know, left and here it has all the sensitive information and you're sending out, using it with someone else, and they haven't sensitized it, sanitized it. So that's, that will be, that's another piece of it, and then implementing a multi-factor authentication code, code, authentication to access the network. So that it, you have to go through two steps before you can actually get in there. And then developing and exercising a cyber incident response plan, so that if there were the possibility of any cyber attack, that something were to happen, we do have a plan and know what to do. And then the other one is to require all employees to annually complete training in security awareness to help mitigate any security risk. So then, in terms of their employees' responsibilities, it is that they're responsible, all employees, to safeguard access to PGCPS network and to refrain from disclosing users' names or passwords that would allow unauthorized access to the computer systems. And then, again, employees are prohibited from accessing, using or disclosing any personalized, personally identifiable information other than what they might need. That's a legitimate reason because of their job. So that they don't jeopardize security of such information. And then all employees are responsible for following the policy and procedures, addressing acceptable, acceptable use guidelines because they are actually very closely tied, again, to cybersecurity. And then under this is penalties, and then if you go down, and your, your previous, the current policy standing up there does talk about this also, that there, if the employee has improperly accessed sensitive information, has attempted to access it, that there will be disciplinary actions. It could be up to including suspension and dismissal. And you'll just see the progression of the discipline. And then also, depending on what employee may do, that absolutely would be possible criminal charges filed, depending on the nature of it. So this talks about that there, if they violated state or federal laws or local, that there could be arrest or prosecution. And then, of course, the board directs the superintendent to develop administrative procedures and also an information technology security plan to implement the policy. So if anyone has questions, or if Dr. Zuckerman would like to follow up, either way.
Sure, I'll just add two comments. Thank you, Ms. Welsh, and thank you, Board Members. One, the policy, the board policy was last updated, I believe, in two thousand and ten, so it's coincidental and ironic that it was scheduled for this year, and of course, this meeting very soon after the incident that we just experienced. So I think it's high time that we do do this. I'm grateful for this opportunity. So I think the language that Ms. Welsh has proposed is more robust than previously and still gives us at the procedure level opportunity to go deep and implement your policy with some room for expansion over, over time. The second thing I would just say is a lot has changed since two thousand and ten. I just read a report just a couple of weeks ago by Microsoft that the K twelve sector is the number one target for cyber attacks. Obviously, we know what happened to us and other districts over the last couple of years. So I think this is an area, it's important that we, we enhance this policy and continue to do everything that we're doing in the path we're on. So I just appreciate the chance to be here tonight and express those sentiments. So thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. The floor is now open for questions, and I just want to begin by thanking you, Mr. Zuckerman. I think that you know, in today's world, we understand how important our technology infrastructure is and that it is a significant task to protect a system the size of the Prince George's County Public School District. So I just want to say thank you. I think, you know, we experienced a breach that I think the district handled in the right way, and I just want the public to understand that today there are many ways that you can harm a school district. Reaching our technology is one of them. And so I appreciate the work that you do and the work of our team in the school district. Colleagues, questions? I see Dr. Miller's hand is raised.
Yeah, I was taking notes, and Mrs., Dr. Zuckerman, your, one of your last statements was about K one being the most vulnerable to attract, was it K one or K through twelve? What does that mean?
It means that school systems are the subject increasingly of cyber criminals who want to target school systems and try to lock up the infrastructure and attack the, the technology system.
Okay, well, when you said K through twelve, that's, that's what threw me off because not just the, the, the grade levels, but also administrative sector too.
Yeah, I, I, I meant school systems, not necessarily higher ed, as much as the kindergarten through twelfth grade school systems around the country. And if I said K one, I misspoke. My apologies.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
I, I see a board member, Walker's hand.
Thank you so much for the acknowledgement. Mr. Zuckerman, Dr. Zuckerman, I'm really excited. I echo exactly what our Chair has said today as far as the actions for Prince George's County. I'm just wondering with, with what you know now and what you know in the future, based on research or what you are projecting inside of news articles, et cetera. I'm just wondering if there's anything else that you would want to put inside of this policy to ensure that we're safeguarded in the future.
No, I think, I think the policy, the way that it's, the revisions are proposed, is sufficient. Ms. Welsh connected with our team, specifically our cybersecurity response team. We vetted this as well, both internally and externally. And, you know, specifically, if you look at, for example, I don't have it, it's not up anymore, but the language, for example, that says PGCPS will safeguard and put in all appropriate security measures to protect this data center and and network. So that, to me, is a very solid, appropriate policy statement that we can then go deeper with at the administrative procedure level and then continue to refer back to each year. And of course, you can hold us accountable and ask us, well, what are we doing with respect to that? So I think that that's one example. And so, yeah, I think it's, I think it's sufficient.
Thank you for that. And then the last thing I'll ask, because I didn't hear it, is do you believe that inside of our policy that we should have a, a check-in, like an annual update for our data procedures? Or do you think that's more of an administrative? Because I think, I'm just wondering, there's probably if there's like new software and all the things that's updated, I don't know what the impact is to schools, and if we do that regularly, that might already be part of your checks. But I'm just wondering, do you think it's necessary to do that? It's more of a question for you and your recommendation. You just let us know. Thank you. And that's it. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, I think, I think, I, I don't think we need it at the, at the policy level, per se, as much as that would be administrative that the board can request as appropriate. And we would provide.
You colleagues, are there any other questions? If not, should we move to action on this policy? Or keep it for further discussion? I have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Dr. Miller.
I move that we I thought, I, I, it appears to be a very comprehensive plan. And I move that we move forward with policy zero one one seven, information technology services, information security to present to, for, to the board and for public comment.
Second.
Yes, Ms. Welsh.
We have not gone actually through the approval process because this was up for discussion, so it would have to come back for, for the action.
For the discussion.
Yeah, as it'll be, it won't, it'll no longer be a discussion item at the next meeting, but it'll be action item.
But an action item, yes, okay.
Oh, for our committee, not for the board, then?
Yes.
So my motion should be that I move that we approve the discussion on policy zero one one seven, information technology services and information security for review by the administration and for return to this committee. I guess our next meeting is in November?
Uh huh, it is.
Okay, in November, for this committee to take a position.
So the motion is to move this po- policy to action at our, at our next committee meeting?
Yes.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, Ms. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on Policy zero one one seven and bring them back to the next Policy and Governance Committee meeting for action. Okay, thank you, Dr. Zuckerman, for taking your time this evening to join us. Again, we appreciate all the hard work you do for us to protect our system.
Thank you, Ron. Have a good night.
Good night.
As well, is your hand raised?
Oh, no, I'm, I apologize. I have to lower it. Thank you.
So we'll go back to item three point zero on tonight's agenda legislative update. First item is three point one, the May legislative committee meetings update. And so I will briefly say that the May's Legislative Committee had a meeting during the May Conference in Annapolis, which I believe, I'm losing track of time, I guess it was two weeks ago when we were in Annapolis, and they made clear what their priorities are for the coming legislative session. And so one of the priority items is a support for governance authority for local school boards to adopt education policies. They're very concerned with the interference in a local school board by outside interests, and they want to make sure that local school boards retain their authority to adopt education policies. And, and there are two big policies that they are looking at this coming legisla- legislative session. One is around the science of reading and one is around the science of mathematics. Basically, two different theoretical and practical approaches to the teaching of science, to the teaching of reading and mathematics. The second item is support for full state funding for, you know, Maryland schools. I think we all heard projections of a possible budget deficit. And maybe it's very concerned that Maryland does not backtrack on its commitment to funding its schools. Another priority item is, of course, the blueprint for Maryland's future, something that we're committed to as a district that the legislature has funded. But we also know that, given certain projections in Annapolis, there may come a time when funding for the blueprint will be challenged. There's already one county expressing some concerns that we cannot fund the blueprint as it has been adopted. So we'll have to keep an eye on that. And then one of the other priorities is for increased state funding for school construction and renovation projects. There was a lot of discussion about this at the May Conference because it's clear that most of Maryland's school districts have students enrolled in buildings that are inadequate for today's education. And we should be proud that in Prince George's County, we have opened six new schools, that we have eight more scheduled for construction. And during that meeting, there were a number of board members from other school districts who approached me because they want to learn more about our alternative construction finance program. So in many ways, Prince George's County is leading the way on this issue in school construction, and we should be proud that we are making it a priority to put our children in twenty-first century buildings. If you go around the state, many of the school buildings which children attend, and this is throughout the state, in almost every school district, are really inadequate and deplorable. And so May believes that they would like to push hard for increased school construction funding, and it's something that a month ago, during a taping for Maryland Public Television, that the governor even committed to. He said that he fully supported expediting school construction in the state of Maryland and didn't want to see the state, at the same time that we're pursuing the blueprint for Maryland's future, which is supposed to lead us into the future, to have students in school buildings that are twentieth-century school buildings. So it's something that we should be happy about in the position that we've taken as a district. And it's certainly something that will join with May in the upcoming legislative session and making sure that that is also a priority of this board. So that, that's my May legislative update. Item three point two, and, and we can certainly come back to the legislative update. I, I do want to say about the legislative update, we are working to make sure that we have our legislative agenda in place, in time to be considered by our county delegation before the start of the legislative session in twenty twenty-four. We don't want to be stragglers in this process. We want to make sure that they understand the priorities of the school district, that is board and administration jointly, that we are presenting a united front. Ms. Welsh.
Um, bef- before, are you planning to move next to policies?
Well, I was planning to move the, the blueprint implementation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, because I, I, I heard you say this is the, the end, that you are finalizing the update, but I did want to share with you that we did put a draft legislative platform paper on the agenda to discuss.
Okay, we're gonna go, we're going to three point three legislative session, so we'll, we'll discuss it in the three point three. So, so briefly, and I, I did three point two blueprint implementation update. It is, as always, important that we remember that the blueprint is sort of a a very historic and landmark education program, comprehensive education program. However, it doesn't cover everything. But Maryland is taking a significant leap by supporting the blueprint. And I think we are of like mind with May that we have to make sure that the legislature keeps its commitment to the blueprint and fully funds the blueprint. That will become more of a challenge as the state faces some fiscal issues. But I think that we have to make sure that we let our delegation know that is our expectation that they will support the blueprint in its entirety to make sure that we are providing the finest quality education to the children who attend our schools in Prince George's County. It's not an easy task. And the blueprint is a decade-long program. Anything can happen over ten years. You could have a recession. You could have an emergency that puts the state in some fiscal peril. But given the state of education in the state of Maryland, we know that if we don't stay committed to the blueprint, that Maryland will fall farther behind amongst all fifty states. And this is one of the reasons why we have the blueprint, because after much work through the Kerwin Commission and studying other states and looking at the quality of education in states like Massachusetts and New Jersey, it was the wisdom of the Kerwin Commission to suggest that Maryland needed to make this commitment. The legislature followed up initially after veto by former Governor Hogan. And Governor Moore has made clear from his campaign to current day that he is of full support of the blueprint for Maryland's future. It's our responsibility to make sure our elected officials keep that commitment. I'm saying that not just for the board, but for any members of the public who are watching this. That you need to make sure that when you see a legislator, particularly the legislator who represents your legislative district, that you make sure that you tell him or her that your expectation as a Prince George's County resident is that they keep the promise on the blueprint and fully fund of the blueprint for Maryland's future. Moving on to item three point three legislative sessions, I'm going to yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to update us on the work plan.
Um, okay, Cindy, can you bring that up, please? Oh, that's not that. Cindy, that's not the, that's not the, our platform that I sent you the link to.
Yes, we're addressing the work plan route right now. The platform is after that one.
Oh, it is. Oh, okay. I didn't see it on the update. Okay. I did want to, I was pointing out, everything is pretty much the same, except we did make one revision to the work plan, so that if you go to the October seventeen To the, um, work plan so that if you go to the October seventeenth meeting, because we have reviewed this previously, that we had put. Uh, good, okay, October seventeenth, the student board member has been, um. Uh, put in for today, actually, and we, um, moved it, uh, moved the other one. Can you go back to, to January, please? Uh, keep going, keep going. And then if intellectual property rights, we switched that out so they, that was put into January. Other than that, everything else is the same and, and it's, it's final at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. And I apologize for that because the agenda that I'm reading, um. Had the work plan under legislative session, and so I think that's where the confusion was, that we, we went to work plan, so, um. Perhaps now we can, uh, provide the update on. There we go. On, uh, our legislative platform.
Okay, this is, um, this is, of course, is still in draft form and, um. Mr. House, our superintendent, has had the opportunity, as well as our chief of staff, Ms. Boyd, to review and go through it, um. And we, this is the opportunity now to share with the committee and get your feedback as far as. Um, you know, pros and cons related to what you see, just as a quick overview, because there's a lot of information, it, um, basically gives. Uh, has the members of the, uh, committee there. It gives you a little bit of, uh, you can keep scrolling, Cindy. It gives you just the charge of, uh, what the policy and government. Governance Committee charge is, and that came from policy eighty one hundred that talks about our committee and what the committee is required to do. And then if you keep scrolling down. Uh, you have, we have a, a letter from the superintendent. Um, that talks about how important this process is and why the platform is critical in terms of providing information to the delegates. Um, and for, um, what the system really needs to be successful. Um, and certainly I hope that everyone takes the time to read through all of this, so they can have a chance to see all aspects of it. And then if you scroll down a little bit further. Um, this is the index, so what you will see. In the, um, index you're gonna see next, the key points for the school system, and then just what government relations does, but more, the most important piece has to do with the legislative priorities. So we have several sections. It's the local boards, the local school board authority. Then staffing and recruitment, curriculum assessment, grading, funding for success, school safety. Student welfare, special education, and charter schools. So we'll just quickly go through each of those. Um, uh, but this is just a little bit about Prince George's County Public Schools. Um, and then this is about what government relations does. And then, um, we get into the actual priorities. So that we, for each one of these sections, we put in a couple paragraphs that sort of describes what's important to this, to this, to this, both the Board of Education and the Superintendent. In this instance, we're actually talking about the importance of the Board of Education to have authority over its own governance and the operation of the school system. Um, and, and basically the requirement to be allowed to do determine educational policies for the school system with the advice of the superintendent. Um, and, um, why, also why it's so important is because the Board of Education, right now, we have a mixture of. Um, elected board members. Uh, and appointed board members, and in the future, they will be all elected, and so the community has elected board members to make these decisions, so that's why it's so critical that the board has the authority it needs to have to operate. So then if you go down, uh, scroll down, please, Cindy, it then has what the school sys- what the Prince George's County Public School supports. And, um, it says control, the Board of Education that supports control of education policy, curriculum, budgets, administration. The appointment authority for the superintendent of schools, because at this point, the executive, um. Um, the, um, the, the county, basically, our executive, uh, person that actually has that authority, but the school board doesn't, and then local board authority, authority to govern its operation. If you look at, um, ten seventy nine, House Bill ten seventy nine, it actually took away some of that authority with the types of things that it, uh, re- requires now. That what this, we wrote was a opposed legislation that reduces the authority of the. Board and governance and, uh, budget, budgetary authority, but also interferes with the board's authority to negotiate the contract with the superintendent, anything like that, we would, you would oppose, and legislation that creates unfunded mandates. Um, so, um, and we'll look forward to your feedback as we go through this. The next one is staffing and recruitment. And again, it talks about the importance of having, um, you know, excellent, excellent, um, uh, educators, as well as, um, the, uh, uh, educators that are diverse, partially diverse. And then what all the requirements are for, uh, the legis- for their educators, as well as the, the need to have legislation that creates incent- incentives for, to attract. Educators, because that is a major, uh, area of concern for us. And if you scroll down, um, then you'll see what, uh, the school system supports. So, uh, the blueprint has, um, this whole thing about the teacher career ladders. But there's no real uniformity requirements, so any, each county can do sort of what they want, which can be very problematic when. School systems are competing to attract teachers, so therefore, uh, what we would support is a uniform teacher career ladder. So that we all have the same, so that a teacher doesn't go to one county because they think they can make it to the principal level faster than they can in another county, then they can move up the ladder quicker. Uh, so that's one thing. We also, uh, um. Would be, uh, supporting a waiver so that those teachers who actually, um, have failed. And have attempted to pass, but they failed the require, required exams in order to be certified. Um, however, they have been, so they have been working in the school system and they actually. Have had evaluation status for three years that are considered highly effective. That we would be able to waive that standardized teaching, uh, testing requirement, teacher testing requirement, so that, that we could utilize their evaluations. Because not everyone, there are many people out there that can work really well and do an excellent job, but they don't always test well, so. Uh, that was that one area. And then the other thing that we, that, um, HR runs into all the time is where, since we're in the tri, uh. Tri-state area, we have teachers coming in and, and this area is so transient, so we have people coming in from all over the country. They, there are many situations where we have teachers that meet certification requirements from the state they came from. But then they come to Maryland and they have to redo all the certification requirements, because there's no reciprocity. So again, that limits, uh, you know, attracting teachers to come to this area, so that is something that we would. Um, uh, support, as well as the development of bus driver recruitment program, because that is a major concern, and it's actually. A major concern across the state. You only have to do is drive from county to county and you'll see signs for bus drivers, that are hiring bus drivers. And then, um, the other area is, um, supplemental local funds. If we, uh, providing funding to supplement our local funds for, um, matching private industry salaries for the recruitment of IT staff, especially in administrative applications, cybersecurity specializations. Um, because that most, most, many of those positions are definitely sit under the union, but. The, the reality is that we're competing against private industry for many of these types of positions. And what we are paying does not match what you can get in the private industry, and as we all know, it's really important. That we have, uh, staff who are specialized in cybersecurity. So, and the administrative applications. Okay, the next one has to do with curriculum assessment and grading. And, um, again, what you had spoke, talked about when you were talking about the science of reading and science of math. This is critically important that the school system, uh, the board, actually, uh, where the board and the school system are establishing curriculum standards is usually the board and the superintendent. Uh, end up being responsible for those, uh, curriculum standards. And what I think is critically important in the state of Maryland, each school system has always had the ability to develop curriculum and assessments. Um, relevant to meeting the needs of their students to meet the standards that the state sets. And so for the state to start dictating exactly how we're gonna teach and what we're gonna teach is actually, we're, it, it's really not making education individualized for the needs of each school system. So this just goes through information about that, and then if you, um, uh, scroll down, Cindy. Um, you'll see that, uh, we support legislation that would require only one blueprint plan to be submitted to MSD and a singular set of requirements, because right now. It's, that's both the, uh, the board as well as the state. Um, that we are, MSD that we are being required, and it's, it's really sort of, it's pretty, it can be confusing and, and pretty time intensive to have to be, you know, submitting two plans. And then flexibilities and options for delivery of virtual instructional programs. As well as, uh, continued flexibility for grading, which we do have flexibility in that arena. And then we do oppose any increase in state assessments requiring an increase in testing time for any given student. Um, and then, uh, any legislation that mandates or prescribes curriculum and related unfunded mandates. And then statewide controls over our student information systems. I, I do want to point out that this information actually has come from the chiefs. Uh, Shelby McCray in my office, the two of us met with each chief, and they did provide us with, um, the, what they see in their operation as they're running their division for the school system. What the air, what the concerns are. So, um, this, this section for funding for success. It begins by talking about why funding is so important and what funding does allow for us to be able to do for our students. But it also, if you scroll down just a little bit further, Cindy, right here, what I did was I did insert in there, um, a statement, scroll up for one second, just so I can pick up this policy statement. I put in the policy zero one zero nine, because that's, that policy actually does address. The, the commitment from the school system to ensure that, uh, we are responsible stewards of the public dollar. And that we are committed to ensure that we are using the funds in the appropriate manner and that all, all the, the board members, the employees, everyone working in the system. Are doing, um, doing their work in a very ethical and moral standards. And the reason I incorporate that is because, of course, we experienced what we had with, uh, the House Bill four thirty seven that was passed last year, but. There's a lot of rumblings out there that many of the other county, uh, the local governments are now really, um. Wanting to step in and sort of dictate what's happening with money within the school systems and, and part of it is because they, uh, they're, at least they're saying accountability factor. And I, I think our school system takes this very seriously in terms of ensuring we're using the funds appropriately, so I felt was important, we just put that there. And then if you scroll down, uh, it's broken, the funding area. Is, uh, the main areas that, uh, one was increased state funding to offset the assets of funding drop. Drop off, because we are going to be seeing that soon, and I'm just wondering, based on what you shared, you said about the, the continued funding. Fully funding the blueprint, that maybe we'd want to put that there also as a board, just so that, because, uh, you brought that up, and I think maybe that would be really important to add there. Um, and then we just broke it into the different sections. Um, we don't have any issues with universal free lunch programs, except that the state needs to fund that mandate. Um, and then also we have our CEP schools where we have a lot of students who are. Um, are students that would qualify for farms, but because they're already getting a free, uh, free lunch, free breakfast in the CEP school, they don't complete the farm's forms. And the farm's forms are critically important because they actually, that's what gets the funding for the school system for the Title One services. So if, in fact, they, uh, came up with some type of alternative form, that every student in the school, in a CEP school had to complete. That would help ensure that we are, funding is not reduced in the area for Title One. Um, the technology, uh, definitely increasing state funding for converting a virtual programs. Into a virtual school, because last year, House Bill six ten was passed where. Currently, we have a virtual program, but we will have to next year convert that into a school, and there's additional requirements, which will cost additional amount of money. And then also funding for professional development opportunities for staffs in the area of cyber security. Then in, in the area of construction, so, um, if you can scroll down, yes, perfect. So there's a, um. The P three funding, uh, last year, we did receive fund, additional funding, but, uh, we had only, um. Uh, we're talking about one additional school, and in that legislation, they added another additional school, so that funding that we received is not as. Great as you would think, because now we're talking about two schools, so we, um, they, we definitely, uh. Are want support, a mandate for additional funding, suf- suf- sufficient funding and a larger state contribution. But the key is, we don't want there to be a requirement that PGCS that matched that state funding for these two additional schools. Um, and then, um, a revision to the Build to Learn Act that will require the state to begin paying, uh, making payments to PGS. In FY twenty five versus FY twenty six, because that same bill I mentioned before, that it was actually saying the funding would come in on FY twenty, FY twenty six, and there's many expenses when you're. You, you know, preparing to build, there's many expenses prior to even the building, so we'd like to have that funding beforehand. Definitely a continuation of the aging school program and then increasing funding, increased funding for aging school, for the aging schools program. Uh, we, uh, I think the, uh, bill passed last year, I know it did, but I think it's in twenty twenty seven that that program's supposed to go away. And we, the, the Prince George's County Public Schools has a lot of schools that are very old, and so. We actually rely on that funding to help us, um, do the necessary work we need to do in those. Buildings to make them usable for the schools, for the students. And then, um, the other thing is, um, the funding for the expansion of pre-kindergarten and CTE education facilities, these are requirements from the blueprint, but. Just for, like, if you just take pre-kindergarten, even if you do boundary changes and that opens up different buildings that you could put pre-k programs in. That doesn't necessarily, doesn't necessarily mean that building is appropriate for pre-kindergarten, because a lot of times you're gonna have to go and retrofit those bu- those buildings, which costs money. Um, to do that, so funding in that area. And then also increased state funding for school construction and renovation project, projects that's commensurate with the modern day cost. Of designing, building, and renovating, operating, maintaining, um, these high-quality learning environments. And then if you scroll a little bit further, um. Cindy, and then continued funding for the current school construction programs in the Build to Learn Act. While at the same time simultaneously opposing any legislation that would limit authority over school facility design, construction, procurement, maintenance, operations. Um, and then we would definitely support a special grant to assist with the funding of Sutland High School campus modernization, uh, we. Uh, a hundred million would be, would be really appropriate. And then an exemption, we also support an exemption to uncommon rigorous store water management requirements, including during the construction period. Uh, and then the last one that we would support in the funding area is funding for electric buses and the charging, charging. Infrastructure. Currently, a diesel-run bus costs about, um, a hundred thousand, and if we, the electric buses cost three hundred and fifty thousand, so. Um, we are getting, we are, you know, we have grants this year and next to pick up more, to pick up these buses. However, that's small in comparison to how many buses out there that we really need to. Convert over to electricity, and therefore, we really will need the, uh, support. We do have one opposition in the funding area, and that is the, we would oppose repealing the state law, law requiring the county to fully dedicate telecommunications, energy, tax revenue. Towards funding PGCS operating expenses. Currently, we receive sixty five million, which we used towards our operating expenses, and, um. That would be, um, we would feel losing that sixty five million, so that's, that's there too. Then this is just some data underneath this that just gives you the budget highlights from, um, for the upcoming budget, for the FY twenty four budget for this year. So now if you scroll down, Cindy, we can get to the next area. Keep going. You can keep scrolling, and we're gonna get to school safety. So, uh, in that arena, um. It's, um. This one, it should say, and I don't know why this is coming up, because it should say school and community safety. Um. So I'm thinking, it's, uh, I don't know, I'm gonna have to check with, um. Shelby, because she had made the changes and that was supposed to be there, but anyway, and we will change that. Anyway, it, there is, um, a concern, of course, as everyone knows, for school safety in the schools, um, around many factors. Um, both with weapons and also with, um, even, uh, drugs, you know, many different things going on in the school, so this just talks about prioritizing that, and then if you scroll further down. Um, it says what we will support in that area. So the first thing we wrote was legislation home parents accountable for student fighting and bringing weapons to school. If you recall, there was a bill that came through last year, but it didn't pass, and it had to do with, uh, responsibility of parents with weapons in their homes. So, um, and of course, that's something major that we're dealing with every day, and so, uh, any kind of legislation in that arena would be helpful. And then funding for crime prevention programs for younger students. And, uh, increased funding for wraparound services and behavior support services for students and families. Um, because it gets to the crux of the problem, many times, um, the, the behavior we see in the school is related to the needs of what needs to be happening in the home. And then continuation of Maryland Safe to Learn Act grant funding for updating facilities, camera equipment, or metal detectors. Um, they, we received grants for like three years in a row, and that was how we were able to. Put new locks on all our classroom doors. Previously, the door is locked from the outside. And so if you wanted to lock the classroom door, if an active shooter was coming through, you'd have to actually walk into the hallway where the active shooter was to cl- to lock the classroom door, so now. Every single classroom door is locked from the inside and there are safety locks, uh, so even a student could lock it if we needed to, and then up, um. And then up, we are also supporting mandated, a legislation that mandates automation of the criminal justice systems. The FBI, state and national processing of required criminal history checks. Cause currently we have contractors that we use across the country, actually, when we're talking about virtual services. And it makes it very difficult if seizures is only, only providing us Maryland information when they do fingerprinting. And so, and the process takes several days. So to be able to expand it so that we're getting a national search as well as the information immediately. And then let's move to the next one. We have student welfare. And that again, talks about how important it is for, for us as a school system to take care of our students and their welfare. Because if students don't feel mentally and emotionally safe in a school and feel, you know, comfortable with what's going on in the school, that, that, I mean, there's lots of research that shows that, that really impacts learning. And so this is an important piece for us to always be providing for our students. So then in terms of what we support, if you'll scroll down Cindy, so we get to the supports. We support additional funding for more professional school counselors, school psychologists, addiction counselors to improve the student to staff ratios. We do not meet the national standards at this point. So if we could meet, be able to meet those standards, those ratios, that would be really excellent. Funding for training of parents and students on prevention of drug addiction, drug treatment centers, residential treatment centers to be provided and funded by the state. Budget enhancements for provision of professional develop, excuse me, development outside of the school day for our teachers, counselors, psychologists on student behavior problems, de-escalation techniques, working with traumatized students. Legislation mandating the provision of community crisis services. Legislation that supports school systems that employ school nurses to become vaccine for children providers. And then, and I'm not sure what happened here, and support school systems that employ school nurses, not managed by the health department. If you can scroll down a little bit further. And then legislation for an increased expansion on our existing wellness clinics. We currently have four, but we'd like to see it increase to ten. And then funding for strategically located full-time, year-round, full-service immunization clinics that serve as a resource for uninsured and underinsured. We have, that is an ongoing problem, ensuring that our students are immunized so they can come into school. And if they haven't had the immunizations that they're required to, of course, they can't come and attend school. And of course, we don't want our students out of school. So the, anything we can do to make it more, school more accessible to them by having their immunizations would be excellent. As well as every time our, our September thirtieth is the count, the student count that they look at for what is the enrollment for the school system. And then the per people funding that we receive is based on the September thirtieth count. So if we have students that are still not in school because they haven't been immunized, that's a reduction in the funding that we do receive. So not only does the students lose out, but then the system loses out. That legislation that reduces barriers for students to access home and hospital programs. The state of Maryland is very conservative in the use of that, but there's many times that students really do need to be able to access home and hospital programs due to whatever their personal situations are. And then also legislation allowing for the provision of virtual instruction for home and hospital programs. And then if we can scroll down a little bit further. I think we're almost near the end, or a special education. This talks about our special education programs and ensuring that we are providing free, appropriate public educations that are individualized to meet the students' needs. And then if you scroll down Cindy, we have what the system supports. There you go. A significant increases in funding to support high quality special education services. Many years ago, when the special education law passed, there was the, this whole thing that they were going to, we see, we were going to receive all this federal funding, all school systems across the country. That never happens. So we do support significant increases in funding to support high quality special ed services. We also increase this, support the increase of state share of total costs for non-public placements of students with disabilities. And then also any incentives that could be legislated to attract a high quality special ed teachers, related service provider, support personnel. So that we can provide the appropriate services for students. In general, you know, it's, it's, we are, we have a shortage of teachers in general. But it's always been, there's even more of a shortage when it comes to special education teachers. So anything that can be done to get those special education students would be excellent, teachers would be excellent. And then undated, the thing we do oppose is unfunded mandates to provide special ed services. And then I think there's one more yet. So if you can scroll down Cindy, last one, charter schools. So one of the things that this section talks about is making sure that the Board of Education is the, has the authority to grant the, they have the chartering authority so that they are the sole public charter entity for granting a charter, which I think is highly important. And I think in terms of, could you scroll down just a little bit Cindy, please? This, what we support is high academic accountability for all charter schools. Again, continuation of local board authority over charter schools and to grant the charters. Requirement for charter schools to comply with federal and state laws governing public schools and including fiscal accountability. And that, and I know in certain situations, we have had charter schools that were like, do not want to have to have the same kinds of requirements as the regular public schools. And so we want to ensure that they still are required to follow the laws that we're required to follow. Also that employees at charter schools must, must be employees of the school systems, including their compensation and certification requirements consistent with our other, other public schools. And one of the, I did add this in here, legislation allows school systems to set a due date for charter school applications in order to allow school districts adequate planning time to address financial staffing, transportation and scheduling needs. So if you think about the conversation we had when we were talking about the charter school policy and the fact that the charter school office is saying, well, we need this amount of time to be able to really work with the charter school and their application and go through the process and evaluate everything. And then the, the committee, the board was saying, yes, but we need this amount of time that for it to be at the board level to, in order to be able to have enough time to evaluate the charter application that's come in. So the purpose of this is just to see if it could be an extended amount of time so that both entities, the, the staff in the charter school office, as well as the board of members, had the time to really evaluate the application. And then legislation to clarify ownership of charter school assets that have been purchased with public funds. And then if you go down, we have some, a couple of opposing statements which have to do with anything that's going to limit the board's authority for their charter school authority and also weaken requirements of academic and fiscal accountability to the board. Blanket waivers for charter schools that release the charter schools from the same laws and regulations that our public schools are required, as well as blanket waivers from our board policies and systems administrative procedures. We oppose that. And then allowing the, the charter schools to, allowing them to be virtual charter schools and promoting home instruction through the charter schools. And then legislation that would allow charter schools to employ individuals that are not public school employees. And also that legislation that would require, would not require same certification requirements that are required of our public school employees. So that is it in a nutshell. I don't know how, how, where you want to proceed with this, but this just gives you a quick overview of everything.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. And before I go, and I just want to acknowledge that we've been joined in the meeting by our student member of the board, Rain Rivera Forbes, who was a member of the Policy and Governance Committee, as well as a board member, Jocelyn Row. I see Dr. Miller's hand raised and whether hand raised, but, but let me begin by saying this. Last year, after the legislative session, I think the board felt a certain sort of way, because we felt that we were number one, being targeted by legislators, legislators in the governance of the school district. And we did not want that to be the case this year. We wanted to take a very proactive stance and presenting a unified platform that represented the board's preferences and the administration's preferences. And this document that you saw tonight is that. And I'm very thankful for that. I think we have to remember that we are the second largest public school district in the state of Maryland. So when Prince George's County speaks, it speaks loudly and it has an impact. And in many ways, we are a trend-setting school district. So it's important for us to take responsibility in terms of our conversations with our legislature about what we believe to be policies that will effectively allow us to provide not only children in Prince George's County, but throughout the state, the highest quality education that we have. Before I acknowledge a board members who have their hands raised, we do have Superintendent House with us tonight. And so we'd just like to give him an opportunity. Because many of the items that you saw in this platform are items that the administration believes are critical to the success of the school district. So Superintendent House, the floor is yours if you care to make any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. And I want to first of all, just thank this committee for the commitment and the, and the work. This is critically important as we kick off the legislative session in, in January. I think this is the first step and it, it started with this committee. So thank each of you on this committee for your commitment, your work to ensure that we have an eventual agenda that really speaks to the needs of what this school district needs, wants and deserves for its children and then community. So I'm, I'm extremely excited when I had a chance to, to take a look at the, at the document here in the last couple of days. I could do nothing but smile because it truly embodies what I believe has to be pushed. I think the next step, quite frankly, is, is making sure that we team up as a, as a board and an administration to ensure that our presence is in several rooms in, in Annapolis when the time comes. So I'm excited, as you may know, Mrs. Boyd, as well as Mrs. Welsh are working on a legislative day for PGCS so that we can bring legislators into PGCS to not only share this commitment that you all have, have developed and brought to the table, but also share all of the good things that are going on in our school district as well. We want to provide a day where our students are leading the way and showing off all the different positive things. Because that connects, quite frankly, legislatively to the support that we know we need as well. So with that being said, thank you for a few minutes, Mr. Fields, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent. I do see Vice Chair Briggs' hands raised.
Yes, thank you so much Chair Fields for recognizing me and thanks so much, Ms. Welsh, for the presentation. And I got an opportunity to read through the platform and just really appreciate us taking a concerted effort and a proactive effort to address some of the things that we had issues with last year. And I just want to make a few recommendations for consideration to the legislative platform. And I'll just kind of mention the different sections and the specific piece. And then Ms. Welsh, I'm happy to send you, I kind of made some markups to the draft clock that you sent us. So I'll just send that to you as like a follow-up, so we don't have to.
Great, okay.
So for D, where it says funding success, actually came to mind when you were talking. I was thinking that I read an article about how certain school districts are using virtual teaching as a way to address a teacher shortage. And so I thought maybe it might be helpful to add in a bullet point about potentially expanding virtual teaching practices as a way to address the teacher shortage. And I can send that recommendation as a comment, as I said, as well as the article that I referenced. So you can refer back to it and see if it's something that's useful. For section E, school safety, this is for the first bullet point. Had concerns about, this one was about the, the parent piece. And I can say the specific bullet point if it's helpful. This one was around the, let's see. Legislation holding parents accountable for students fighting or bringing weapons to school. And I said I had concerns about what exactly that means or how it might be interpreted. Because I, I know that, you know, depending on the person, they may see that as more punitive measures that we need to take. And I know that, well, at least I don't feel as a school member that I'd be confident with like, you know, parents being arrested or different things like that because of outcomes with their kids. So just wanted to maybe have stronger language in there around what exactly we mean. Be more specific, are these punitive measures? Could this include legal intervention? So just wanted to clarify that so that for, for those who are creating policies, they're not misinterpreting the intent behind what we're saying. F, student welfare, this is for the fourth bullet. I said, I wonder if we should say positive behavioral intervention systems. So this was the one talking about kind of students with trauma, behavior issues. And again, this is just like a language thing, but for me, I was thinking maybe we could use more education-centered language. So positive behavior intervention centers, CBIS, and I think many educators would get that. And also just good for legislators to know, restorative behavior management practices, research-based and evidence-based and trauma-informed interventions for student behaviors. I think it also gives them more of a positive framing. I, I didn't, I know it wasn't intended that way, but I was reading it, it felt a bit, like it could be misinterpreted, the language. And then the last thing I'll say is for G, special education, this is for the first paragraph. I said, I like the positive framing for, this is for students with disabilities. And so it says regardless of abilities, and then it says or disability. And I just like the language of regardless of ability. And I think, you know, because I don't think that it's a, you know, just addressing disability. So I just thought we could strike disabilities out of that. And I'll send those recommendations over to you directly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Briggs. But let me also say this, having been a lobbyist for a number of years, you never get everything that you want. But you don't get what you don't ask for. And so I want the public to understand that this is our wish list. We probably will not be successful on every point. The legislative process is about compromise. And sometimes there are certain things that you cannot get because the politics of the moment won't allow it in the state legislature. But it doesn't mean that it's not a priority. We come back the next year and we ask again. But this is where the public has a role, because you vote for the members of the legislature. You are their constituents. So we want you to understand that this has to be a Prince George's County community effort. It is the Board of Education, it is our school district administration, but it is also you, the parents and taxpayers of Prince George's County, that if you want a high quality public school district, you must demand that of your legislature. And we're hoping that when we go into the legislative session, that we have your voice as well in Annapolis to reinforce the points that we are raising in this legislative platform. I'm excited about this work because I think that if we move forward in a very united way, that we will have success during this legislative session. I think that the times demand it. We have an excellent school district, but we have some work to do. And so what we're calling for is for our legislative leadership to understand that we know what is required for us to move this district forward. And we just need them to support these initiatives that are in our platform. Dr. Miller, I see your hand raised.
Yes, Ms. Walsh, this is a very well detailed platform and greatly appreciated. I'd like to go back to the section on local school board authority. I'm looking at the, what we, the supports as well as the opposes. And I just wanted for clarification purposes, wouldn't HB eleven oh seven have to really be eradicate? I mean, crossed out? Because technically, we are saying we oppose legislation that interferes with the board's authority to negotiate a contract with its superintendent. All of that came under eleven, where a lot of authority was given to the county executive. So wouldn't we have to amend, I, I think that's a better term, amend eleven oh seven?
So what would generally happen is if we, they introduced another bill, they would introduce a bill that would then revise that, would write, revise that, the bill that's on the books right now. And they do that all the time. If you look through all the, all the different bills out there, education bills related, or I should say laws now that are related to either the board event or to the operation of school systems that you'll see, they, they're back and forth and changed numerous times. So yes, that would be what would have to happen. They would, they would, and revise that.
Well, would we be the ones to intro, you know, as a board? Well, would we be the ones to intro- you know, as a a board, would we be the ones to write the proposed legislation?
Ideally, we would have a delegate uh that would actually um introduce legislation that would have what we are interested in seeing.
That's my question, would we give the, we give them what we want to see and what we would want them to sponsor for us?
Right, and then and then.
Go ahead.
Yes, and then and then we would ask the delegate to be the sponsor of the legislation.
Correct.
This is the framework for the legislation. We'd expect the delegate to actually write the legislation, the bill that would be introduced, that would rescind eleven oh seven. And return and return to the board the authority to um appoint the superintendent. So, you know, there there will be a lot of back and forth uh with our legislative delegation as we move forward. Uh and and we have to remember, so when we talk about issues of local authority. I want the public to understand, it's not that we do not want to work in partnership with our legislature or our county council. Our school district is an independent authority, it's an independent body. And we want to make sure that the Board of Education continues to have that independent governance authority. Particularly since we are going to an all-elected board. And so the voters will elect those members who they can hold accountable for the governance of the school district. And that's why you're hearing so much about local authority and local governance control. Board Chair Mickens, I Mickens Murray, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, um I want to let this this uh committee know that uh Vice Chair Lolita and myself, Vice Chair Walker and myself. We met with the senators who have um agreed, and I believe um in a positive way, to be partners with us. We also have received or they're working on an invitation for us to come meet with the delegation. Uh Mr. Fields, you have uh graciously accepted leading this effort for the school board. And determining our priorities. This is great work, um Ms. Welch, that you have started. I I agree, everything is in this that I can think of, that I would want to have addressed in any legislation. But we must establish the priorities for us. So even at the end of the day, we must put this uh group of requests for legislative priority in a priority order. Because like someone already said, everything can't be funded. We put more weight on some things than we do on other things. So as you do this work, uh Mr. Fields, if you could just let us know. I know that you sent out a document where board members filled out what their individual priorities are. I don't know if those made it to Ms. Welsh or not, or if there's an intention to do that, you can share that with us. And then let us know how, I I heard Superintendent House say, we're going to do a legislative day. Uh and I want to see, please let that be collaborative between the school board and the and the uh superintendent. So I look to you, Mr. Fields, to give us guidance uh on the board as to how we can uh. Support that effort, and then if the board is intending to do something in addition to that, uh to let us know how that planning looks. And then finally, I would, I ask, um has every committee, I I heard you say, Ms. Welch. That you went to all of your leads in the in the um in the uh the team, the leadership team. But did did, has this document made it to all of the committee chairs? So that they can have some discussion of a portion of it that uh that they are. Addressing within their committees to make sure that they receive, that you receive input from that um those organizations as well. I think it's it's an opportunity for us to be collaborative across this district. Uh if we allow all the entities an opportunity to at least weigh in on the document. What I'm understanding is, this is the first cut, i- if I'm understanding correctly. Am am I right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so so that's all I'm asking, so and I'm I'm trying to say I appreciate the work that you've done. And I can tell that a lot of work uh went into this. And I definitely appreciate the um the focus on charter schools. Because I think that's important for us to address that and try to fix what has been a stumbling block for us in the last year. So, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, we will distribute this document to our committee chairs. And in terms of a priority, uh this document will have um should have sort of a cover sheet. That speaks to the priorities of the school district. Um and and we'll work with the administration to make sure that items important to the administration. Uh which should be items of importance to the board and vice versa um are included. So that uh we go into the legislative session, you know, with a clear understanding that while um we support all of it. That we do have some priorities that we'd like the legisla- legislature to focus on. Um I see uh board member, first recognized Board Member Walker, since she's a member of the committee, and then Board Member Ralph. I think you're on mute, Board Member.
I am, and on your phone, it's so difficult to get to the unmute, so I appreciate that, thank you very much. I thank you for reiterating, the first point I was gonna make was, thank you Chair Mickens Murray for bringing up. That we have had collaborative discussions thus far, which look like a great partnership to be had, and also the priorities. So I won't hone on on that because uh Board Member Fields, his Chair Fields for this committee has already said that we are gonna prioritize some things. That would be so helpful, as you know, for us to be on one page, to be able to give to the delegation. I also was wondering if in fact that we could also have, and maybe we just give it to Ms. Welsh. Is that as we identify, as let's say a delegate or a senator says, you know what, I'm aligned to that bill and I am gonna sponsor that. Then we can have a sheet that has that checked off, so that Lolita isn't still trying to rally support on that one. But instead, I can move to number two, three, four, and five, makes sense? So we can just consider that. Um another piece is, um and Ms. Welsh, I am just so appreciative of the work that you continue to do in partnership with this board. Um I know that we talked about, we just have so much. Violence that we are seeing within the schools, and I appreciate that there was a section there that talked about school and community. School and community safety, in that I know we talked about weapons. And I will go back and I will take a look at what that actually says to just see it was going a little bit fast. But I really just want to just tap into what are we doing that we are gonna support or either bring up. For a priority legislation that's really around um ramifications to uh crime. That is happening inside of our schools. Okay, so that's one, I just want, I'll I'll take a look at that, it's not that I'm asking you to do anything, I just need to take a look at it, but want the committee to know kind of where my head is. Also, legislation, and I don't know what it looks like yet, everyone, and I know we're dealing with scholars. But really around bullying and accountability for that, um and I know we talked about parents. So that's gonna, I I I just want to look at that, and there's just so much bullying is happening, which then leads us to mental health. And so uh in the vein of mental health, I did see a sheet that really is on there, but supporting legislation. That um not only um pushes for accountability around mental health inside of our system. But also for, I heard you say, uh recovery houses, uh substance abuse houses, and then post-recovery. I didn't hear that piece right there, so just accountability around that. And those are the things that I have that I heard, I'm sorry I wasn't writing, but it's very um, it's very thorough, thank you, and I'll be, and I'm gonna go through that. Thank you guys very much.
Well, thank you, Board Member uh Walker, uh Board Member Ralph.
Thank you so much Chair Fields for calling on me and acknowledging me, even though I'm not a member of this committee. I think this committee did a fine job with uh reaching out to all of the board members as I'm not on this committee. But I did provide my comments and suggestions in the form of a survey. So I would like to thank this committee for extending the opportunity. Um and so in that same vein, um in supporting with my colleague, uh Board Member Walker stated. I'm really interested in focusing more or seeing you all focus more on uh the behavioral health intervention strategies. Um not only will it take additional financial resources. Um to expand uh to the tune of meeting the trauma-informed needs. Um so what people don't recognize is that we're still in COVID and we're coming out of COVID. And so a lot of the things that we're seeing is post-COVID, it's it's related to COVID. The spikes in anger, the bullying increases. Um and so I think um if we utilize some of those words like post-COVID. Um I think that would, if, cause then that brings a whole nother pot of funding that could possibly come from like health. Uh a health response, um and not only a mental health response. Um and um that was the first thing. And the second behavioral health opportunity, what was for for uh as it relates to safety. I know we talked about our students and we talked about our parents, um but what about our teachers? We've heard loud and clear um through testimony of our teachers and our staff. Um some of our bus drivers, that there needs to be a specific strategy for our teachers. To be able to get the support they need. So exploring what that that may look like and expanding on that. And then lastly, um I support Board Member Briggs in his statement as it relates to parents. Um uh parents being, um I guess responsible, maybe was the word. I don't want to use your wrong word, cause I don't have the document in front of me. Um so just, you know, for the purposes of this conversation, responsible for um the harm that's caused. And so I just, you know, just want to throw out, does that look like restorative circles for parents? Um because as a parent, uh uh with the parent seat on the board, you know. I think a lot of parents try to do well by their children, but they may not know how. So if we could really tease out what that how looks like, so we can be very specific in our ask, specific but broad. So if it looks like um parent, you know, parent resources and seminars that are mandatory, maybe. Or I don't know, I don't want to toss around those type of words either, but we, I just think it needs to be more fine-tuned so that, you know. It meets our need, right, the school system, uh our district. But it also uh gives our legislators room and a skeleton and authority to really champion that. And then work with us to build what that legislation looks like. Um but really phenomenal job, you all did a great job, Ms. Welsh. You're you're just, you're just a great person, so I really thank you uh just for all your hard work, I yield.
Uh thank you, and I just, look, um Mr. uh Board Member Fields, may I just say one thing?
Absolutely.
Um I don't want to take all the credit because I had excellent person working with me the entire time, Shelby McRae. And she was very instrumental in a lot of the work that we worked very close together, did excellent. We actually were a great team working together, but I I want to make sure she gets the credit too, cause she did a lot of this work.
Thank you, uh Dr. Miller? Dr. Miller, you're on mute, I believe.
Thank you, uh for clarification purposes, uh this document that um Ms. Welch has presented to us. Is the guideline for the legislators. We don't get into quote the weed of what the legislation says. The legislators will work with us on that. Further, uh when you talk about funding, we can indicate what that funding is needed. But then, when you, when the legislators are writing these bills, they have to uh, if there's funding involved. There is also involved what is called a fiscal note. And that is up to them, not us, to determine, well, we can say how much we need. But the bottom line is, the details of the bill really come from collaborating with the uh the legislators. For instance, uh Robin and um Shelby may be down there lobbying on behalf of uh our priorities. But we can't tell the legislators, you know, this is what we want you to, you know, put in here and the detail. We will get the outline in the bill and it will explain itself and what it should do. And it will also attach the fiscal note, and the fiscal note will be dependent upon how much the state plans on uh budgeting to. To the state, uh to the local um government. So I just wanted that to be clear, because uh I I understand um um this uh Board Member Ralph wanting, you know. A lot of information encompassed in this, but this is where we start. And once we give the legislators what our uh interests or our, for instance, it's been broken down into supports. For instance, under student welfare, uh it says additional funding for more professional school counselors, psychologists, addiction counselors. Et cetera, funding for training of parents, that's what the bill is going to include. However, there are fiscal notes that the legislature will be responsible for attaching. And that um will weigh heavily in terms of getting certain uh pieces uh through in in terms of being a bill. Am I correct, Robin?
Um you are, but I will let you know that, uh so how they develop their fiscal note is that as each bill is is comes out. Um myself and Shelby will receive notice that this bill has come out and can, and they uh give us a form and everything. And they're asking for input from each of the school systems about how much, if if this were proposed, how much would this impact the system both financially? As well as operationally, and then um and um hopefully this year, we can even get more information to them. So that they have the information about, so they understand the impact. Um and then they take that information and they will incorporate it into their fiscal note.
Great.
And I would add that once these bills, any bill is introduced and it's assigned to committee. It will be incumbent upon us to make sure that when these bills are up in committee, that we testify before these committees. And make them understand um how these bills, any bill, will impact the school district, and that may include a fiscal impact. So we'll have an opportunity throughout the process to engage, uh but it's going to be very important. Because the other thing we need to understand, we may have our own legislative platform. Doesn't mean that there's going to be, there's not going to be legislation introduced that we are also going to have to track and monitor. Because any bill could be introduced by any member of the legislature that could have an impact upon Prince George's County. So we're gonna have to pay attention to not just what we say are priorities. But whatever is filed as a bill this legislative session. Um and we really need to be mindful of that, because I think that's the sort of trap we fell into the last legislative session. That we looked up and all of a sudden we realized there were three bills that were filed that were going to directly impact us. So we're trying to make sure that we cover um all bases. Um I see, is that Board Member Walker's hand raised?
Yes, really quickly, thank you so much for acknowledging me. The um related, yet a bit unrelated, if we could on a future meeting, just talk about lobbying, it came up today and I, we have a lobbyist. Um and I just want to make, just us talk about how we want to go about lobbying, um and who we can leverage and make a recommendation to the board, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Board Member, if there's no further discussion on this, I'd like to keep this meeting going. We still have a number of items to uh go over and uh I want to return to our agenda. Uh item four point O, items for discussion, uh there are now six items for discussion. And we will follow the five-minute and three-minute discussion norms of of our meetings. Uh Ms. Welsh, is your hand raised?
It is, I just want to say one more comment about the platform, is that in addition to um um making sure that this goes in the hands of our delegates. So that they know where the board stands on many of these issues. It is beneficial for the board to have this, because if you recall last year, many times these bills would come through. And by the time it got to the board to vote on it, because um it's not every, it's it's every two weeks, but it's uh we have a work session. So sometimes it was once a month, by the time the board could vote on whether or not they wanted to testify on certain things. That we we that we weren't able to do it, because the timeline was, it was spread out too long. But if you have something like this, it doesn't have to go to the board necessarily. If a bill comes up that addresses one of these things we support or oppose, we know where, the board knows where it stands. And so it's ten time, we can, as fast as can be, we can put testimony together to get it out, get it to the delegates right away. So we don't miss that opportunity to have here, for them to hear our voice.
Thank you. Okay, Board Members, before I go to item four point two, I do want to acknowledge that we've been joined by. Okay, board members, before I go to item four point two, I do want to acknowledge that we've been joined by board member Dr. Zupora Miller. And we've also been been honored this evening to have our former student member of the board online with us tonight. Alvaro Saron Ruiz, my predecessor's chairman of the Policy and Governance Committee. So we welcome both Dr. Miller and Mr. Ruiz to the meeting tonight. Item four point two, policy search and seizure. I yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to update us on the new policy, search and seizure. The floor is yours, Ms. Welsh.
Okay, Cindy, do, uh, thank you. So for the search and seizure, if you can scroll down, Cindy. So one of the things that I did add, if you go, keep scrolling down, I'm going to try to get to each of the areas where I added from the last meeting. If you go to number six on page, I guess it's page four, keep scrolling down. There you go. So. Board member Briggs brought up about a question about who is searching the students. And did we address anything related to gender identity? And so I did incorporate. That that says that the student's preference as to who is designated as the third party will be taken into consideration, including but not limited to the student's preference with respect to gender identity. And then also the ability to communicate with and provide support for the student, especially if the student is an English language learner or a student with disabilities. So because they have to have another person present when someone's doing the search. And so that that is purposely there to help the student feel a little bit more comfortable in the process. And then the other piece. Has to do with, if you can scroll down. There's a talk about appeal. Wait a minute, there should be another piece in here. I'm trying to think. I added where it says about the student we get being searched, okay. If you go to page four, number nine, there we go. When a student is undergoing a search, here me, he or she may check in with professional school counselor to discuss the search. And oh, we got a typo there, I'm sorry, receive support. So the purpose of that was to ensure that the, that the student. Because it can be emotional for the student, that the student actually has someone to go talk to about it. And actually receive any type of support that they might need after, if they were actually had to be searched and something had to be seized. And then the last question, our student board member Rain asked the question. So if you go down to page five, under appeals of search and or seizures, and again, I see another typo, I apologize. Anyway, it, number one, if this search is a, now, so let's suppose it's a search and it results in some type of disciplinary action. So then we do have in place appeal process for appealing the results, you know, disciplinary action that has happened. And of course, in the area, when you're talking about the parent or the student that brings up their appealing, the fact that they have this disciplinary action. Then they can bring up that in the undue process. The fact that they felt that your due process was violated because something related to the search and seizure, so that's one place. And then the second place has to do. Specifically, there might not have been any disciplinary action result of it. But if the search of seizure did not result in disciplinary actions, the student or their parent or guardian may file a request for an administrative review. Within thirty calendar days of the date that the search or seizure took place. The request should explain any concerns that the search and or seizure violated policy, blah, 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 search and seizure. And the accompanying administrative procedures. The request shall be filed with the superintendent slash designate. So that was, I believe our student member had asked about that, so I wanted to incorporate that in. So those were the changes that were incorporated based on comments from the last policy meeting, Policy and Governance Committee meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. The floor is now open for discussion and comments. Please raise your hand. If there are any comments or discussion. I see no hands raised. Okay, I didn't see a hand, okay.
That's fine. And Ms. Welsh, I want to say thank you. And I I'm hoping that I won't become that annoying person because I do read all this stuff. So hopefully you see this more like I'm reading it and I care about it and less of like trying to. Also, just want to say, I know that you're turning out a lot of information, you know, you're typing a lot, lots going on. So if there's any typos that that I call out, I'm assuming that that's just by accident, I do it all the time, so. But I did want to just go through and say that there are few suggested changes. I'll start with the big pieces and then go to like the smaller pieces a little bit later. And you're going to laugh at me because I added you, asked you to add in, add in that extra piece around gender expression. And then I was re, or gender identity. And then I was reading it and I was thinking, well, gender identity really, you know, if it's a female student saying I'd like someone who. Is a, a woman, right? Gender identity doesn't necessarily mean that person was born a woman and they may not still feel comfortable. So I think sex was the, was the word I suggested. So this is for section B, searches of students, page three. And that's bullet point number six. And I just said to kind of add in where it says preferences with respect to gender identity or sex inability. So that it just, you know, it encompasses just in case if that's not the case that. The other thing was, so for section B, searches of students, and this is page three, bullet point nine. Say, when a student is undergoing a search, he or she may check in with a professional school counselor to discuss the search. And so this was a small thing. Sorry, I actually meant to not address this one first, but just to receive support, it didn't say that in there. Assuming that'd be added in there. I had, so I had a few things that I wanted to add as like additional pieces. So the one thing is. This was around, this was section G, appeals of search and seizure, page five, bullet point number two. And it talked about, it was really the only point in there around parents and them receiving information. Or I think this is bullet point number two. And it said. That the, that the essentially the parent and guardian might file a request for an administrative review within thirty calendar days of the date. And I was thinking to, we could add in language that says, or within thirty days of receiving notice. So if they, you know, if they, if the event happened on September thirtieth, but they didn't see the notice in, you know, from PGCPS until October fifth. I feel like it'd be fair for them to have at least the amount of time that they receive the notice to respond to the incident.
Do you mean notice of that their child was searched?
Notice, yeah, notice that their child was searched, a notice of this actual search and seizure.
So they are, the, the blood is going to be, because we've already started working on one administrative procedure related to the metal detectors. And then we're going to have another administrative procedure that's more broad in terms of search. And they, the schools are supposed to contact the parents on the very day. That we can put notice, but they are supposed to contact the schools on the very day that the student was searched.
And I know it said in there, like it says something like every attempt would be made to reach out to the parent. But I was thinking if, you know, you had, you do have parents whose numbers change or I just think. So if they received it like twenty days after, but that was the first time they got the, the actual message. I think it'd be fair for them to have at least thirty days to respond to it versus. You know, because we couldn't get the number. That's what I'm thinking. That's my recommendation, doesn't necessarily have to be the case. The other thing was I wanted to add a section around, oh, this is for parent notification. And it was, I felt that it was missing language around police interviews. And so I looked up just like what other school districts might do. So this was one around parental consent and presence during police interviews. So if a student says I don't consent to being searched, right? Then they're going to be made aware that there would be a kind of escalation, right? And likely the police would be called or something like that. So if I just, I'm not sure if this is the right place to put it, if there's a different policy. But if that were the case, I would just want to have language in there to ensure that the parent is made aware of a, a specific interview with the police officer. Before the, the student actually sits down with that, that officer, if that's the case.
I do believe that might be in, uh, one of our administrative procedures related to, as, it's not related to search and seizures. But it talks about that very same thing when the police officer wants to. They call the police officer and the, and the police officers, they're investigating, asking questions, all those types of things. But let me double check that. And then we can, we can certainly add some language related to that.
Or maybe it's just a pulling of that language from there to this.
From the AP, uh huh.
The other thing I was going to say was I wanted to add a section H, if possible, around tracking and reporting. So I know that, you know, disproportionately. Certain students are, that are impacted by search and seizures, right? And I know we have the metal detectors, and so I just want to make sure that we have protections around ensuring that we're tracking this information. That we're reporting the information to the superintendent, to the board annually around different subgroups of students. That are kind of disproportionately being impacted by the search and seizure. And I have recommendations of language, so I can just send it over to you. So it's nothing that I'm like, just kind of talking largely, I can send things over to you that are helpful, but really just around, we have an education equity board policy, zero, one, zero, one. Different groups and, you know, whether it's cognitive or socioeconomic. National origin, sexual orientation, or gender identity and expression. So, you know, you still just have those protections in place. And also, even though we're predominantly black and brown school district, I don't want to assume that there's not implicit bias from both students who are identified as black and brown. And also from educators that identify as black and brown. So I think we should still have protections that exist there. And so that was another recommendation that I had was around adding language that talks about implicit bias and just ensuring that we're kind of being equitable. And then I'll just send over other recommendations for this. Again, they're all like itemized, so it's helpful. But these are just my suggestions around what I read through that I was thinking would be additional pieces that we could change. So I'll stop there.
Okay, and I do want to let you know that in the administrative procedure, one of the things that we are going to include is that. Anytime a student is searched, that they will, the school itself will have to complete a report. And it's for the very reason you're talking about, so that we can track the number of searches and which students and look at demographics, all those kinds of things. So that we can ensure, you know, equity in, across the student body in terms of the searches. So that'll be fine.
Thank you. I thought I had saw board member Rivera Forbes hand raised for a second as well.
Yes, and I put it down. I think that Ms. Welsh tackled it with the administrative procedure. I was going to say some of this will absolutely be captured in administrative procedure versus the policy. But one of the things I was going to say is, I think we should think through the idea about the notice. Because I see what Mr. Briggs, I see exactly what you're saying, but sometimes the difficulty is. Parents just might not get to it because of their own issues. Like I didn't get to go to the mailbox for the last fifteen days. Or I got it in my email, but I don't check email for the past fifteen days. And so I just think we just got to think through a little bit on notification and what the, what the school looks at for notification on how they notify people. Not only about search and seizure, but about anything that's related to the school. Because I think that they see those issues at school regularly about not being able to get in contact with parents. That's just it. Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to recognize board member Rivera Forbes.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Welsh. I really liked the updates that were added to the policy. And just seeing how students and their emotional well beings are taking into accountability here. It's very important. So I'm happy to see those additions added alongside being able to appeal as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, board member Rivera Forbes. Uh, board member Rig.
Yeah, I'm going to keep it very short. I just wanted to thank Vice Chair Walker because I actually didn't mean to suggest that we should do either or. So if it's the thirty days comes first, where the, the search and seizure occurs. Or the notice, whichever one comes first is less appropriate. So definitely agree that I don't think like we're giving them a hundred days. So thanks for, for clarifying.
Colleagues, if there's no further discussion, I would ask, should we move this to action on this policy or keep it for further discussion? Is there a motion? Again, colleagues, I would ask, should we move this to action on this policy or keep it for further discussion?
I think, oh, so I moved to keep the policy open for further discussion. To be brought back to the Policy and Governance Committee one last time before going to the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Welsh, if there are no objections. Ms. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight. On this new policy and to bring it back to the next Policy and Governance Committee meeting for further discussion. We move to item four point three on the agenda, policy zero, one, zero, five. Parent, family and community involvement. I yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to update us on policy zero, one, zero, five.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to apologize right from the start and that, so I had all the tracked versions. And I had made so many changes to this policy that when it came time to go back and read through it and proof it. It was so, and I know you know what I'm talking about, when there's so many track changes, it's almost impossible. So I moved it to the clean version, thinking I was saving the tracked versions. And somehow I have, cannot find the track changes anywhere. So I will try to point them out, but I did ask Cindy to post also the current version of the policy that's up there. So that you can see, at least see what it looks like right now versus what these changes are. And I want to also say that this is both about communicating with parents and engagement and having them involved in general. But also because of Title, Title One, there are definite requirements that apply to any of the Title One schools. And the, and so as the education. I'm trying to find it in here. It actually requires that we make sure that we do many of these things. Because as part of the requirement, when you receive the funding, and I did speak to the director of Title One. And she actually, I said, do you see any issues if we say that most of these things are things that should happen across the entire school system? Because they're really just good practice that needs to happen. And she did not see any problems with it. So, and then what the bill, I was trying to look up the name of the act, it's the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. So anyway, I, I'm, I'll go through it quickly for you. I know we're, I'll try to talk as quickly as possible. So this, the first three bullets, the first three sections on our policy statement is really just talking about the importance of having both. Parent, our three, parent, family and community members involved and working together with our staff. And probably for the most important reason is the fact that, and there's a lot of research out there too. That when you have parents, family and the community involved in the education of students, you generally see more academic success with those students. Than when you don't have them involved. So that is the first thing that, that we talk about in terms of ensuring that. We really have involved the family and the parents and a partnership that really helps to support student achievement. And then the last section does talk about, and this, the number C is actually previous language. Which talks about, and it's really more of an equity statement to make sure that we have the involvement of all parents, of parents of all students. Regardless of race, ethnicity, color, national origin, citizenship, status, religion, socioeconomic status, culture, disability. Gender identity, marital status, sex, sexual orientation, age, primary language, parent, family, education, geographic location. Or any other factor that may limit a parent's involvement. Because basically it really doesn't matter what any of these things is, we want parents to be involved in their child's education. And in the, and, and also get their input in the operation of the school system. So then if you move to the next section, we have our purpose and this is just establish the framework of responsibilities. For the implementation of strategies to provide more responsive and inviting school climate and increase the level of parent, family and community involvement in PGCPs. And then if you scroll down, these are all our definitions, this, there's, we, we definitely, the definition for parent is broad. So we're picking up any type of parent that could be out there. And then if you keep scrolling down, we have family and then community, which we're, again, we are, it's broad. We're talking about businesses, government officials, nonprofit service agencies, faith-based organizations, any other organization or individual in, out in the community. And then stakeholders used occasionally throughout the policy, so that's just a definition, which includes everyone, parents, families, students and the community. So then if you go to the standards. It talks about the fact that, again, that effective school, family, community collaboration assures that parents, families, community members. Have the opportunity to effectively work together and participate in making decisions at all levels in support of improved academic performance. So then these are the standards below, and many, many of these were from pre, from the, the current policy that's sitting on the website. All employees will demonstrate commitment to parent, family and community involvement. And then if you scroll down, it says that all employees will interact with parents and families. So that the, so that they are involved in their child's education. And then it also talks about, we'll use reasonable efforts to address concerns from parents, family and community members. In a proactive or restorative manner. And then the next one's providing information regarding services which are provided by PGCPS eligibility for um. The and the eligibility for these services and how to apply, because we do offer a lot of different services for students and sometimes parents absolutely do not. Do not even know what we have that we offer, and so we want to make sure they're aware of that. And then also making sure parents are informed about the expectations for their child's behavior as well as not just behavior, but like attendance. You know, which is a really important piece um and we're constantly uh struggling with. And then providing this to the parents with information about the instructional program and uh the course of study, also the grading criteria, so they realize what that is. Also, in terms of um uh FERPA, ensuring that parents have uh access to their child's educational records. Can you scroll down a little bit, Cindy? And of course, uh ensuring that uh assuring the parents that the the records though are uh kept confidentially. And then um another piece is providing the opportunity for parents, family and community members to participate in decision-making related to both district-wide and school-based issues. Then if we go further, each school in the district will offer training and promptly provide materials to help parents and family monitor and support academic achievement for their children. Um and then an important piece, and this is actually comes from, again, the Title One stuff, making sure materials and information sent him to the parents are provided in a clear, understandable format and language. Um and then also that the superintendent shall develop and require schools to use effective communication methods to ensure that all parents and families, regardless, can you scroll down, Cindy? Um keep going. Regardless of income, ethnic background, language, um uh children to attend PGCS and share and receive school to home and home to school communications about district, schools, classroom programs, student progress. Uh again, that the information is provided in a format and language that parents can understand. And then um the number eleven is is really specific to title, title uh, a Title One requirements. Where comply with the requirements under um the Elementary, Secondary uh Ed- Education Act. Uh where it's the parents were that were supposed to provide meaningful consultation with parents or children participating in our schools uh. To plan and operate programs, activities and procedures for the involvement of parents. So in essence, making sure they're a part of the decision-making. For when we come up with different programs and and activities uh for families and parents. And then an annual review of this policy in each of the schools. Then if you proceed further down. If you can, if you can scroll down, thank you. Um so this is something number twelve, and I put this same statement into the PCCAC policy. Because we have some very general language about advisory with the PCCAC, but instead I so I. I saw this in another policy in another school system, and I thought it might be smart to do this. Of course, if you don't like it, we can certainly change it. Um the board and the superintendent will consult regularly, but not less than quarterly with the parent, community advisory council and may meet more frequently by mutual agreement. So then at least provides a commitment of at least a a quarter, a at least meet consulting with them on a quarterly basis. Um and again, I we can certainly change it. The other thing which we already do is con- conduct a climate and cultural survey annually to understand the perspective of parents, students and staff. Uh regarding our four major um uh areas in the um strategic plan, educational excellence, excellence and equity, workforce and operational excellence and mental health. And then uh the other one, the next one, the last one in that strategy is treating, stop, just go back, go back, go back, just keep going. Back with that, one more what uh right there, treat parents and community members with courtesy and respect. Then the next section under the standards is two-way communication. So. It's not just us talking to the parents and giving them information. We want to ensure we are getting information back from the parents um. Because um it can, it can really, really impact how we operate as a system when we have a better understanding of what. Parents and families, the challenges they face. Um and so they um so they, so anyway, so we have the. PGCPS in each school will effectively communicate methods with regular two-way communication with stakeholders. And I say stakeholders, because it could be parents, family or the community. About district and school level priorities. And that PGCPS in each school will also use effective communication methods um with their parents and families regarding student progress. These communication methods must be provided again in a language and format that parents and family can understand. I know that seems so redundant, but I think it's really critically important because it's easy to get stuck in your own language or format and not realize. You're making it very difficult for a parent to understand what it is we're trying to share. And that P- PGCS in each school will provide adequate notice to parents and families and the community about meetings. So they have adequate amount of time if they want to attend a meeting. And then if you scroll down further, Cindy. Then we have building capacity. So um providing assistance to parents and families and understanding academic except uh assessments and how to monitor their child's progress. Um and so that's more of like a training thing versus an actual uh giving them the information, but helping them understand what they're receiving. And then scroll down further. Um then you keep, okay, and then how to work with teachers to improve the achievement of their children, of the their children. Because sometimes it might just be a matter of, I I mean, we all have experiences when we were kids in school. And sometimes that can really sort of hold you back from maybe expressing what you need to express sometimes to the teacher or the principal or whatever. And so. This is an effort to help the also the parents be able to communicate better to the parent, to the teachers and to the school. Then provide materials and training to help parents work with their children to improve academic achievement. And then also provide professional development to school personnel. And how to work with parents as equal partners in their child's educational process. So and I think that's a critical piece too. Um and then if we get into equity, there's a whole nother section on equity. So if you can scroll down further. And these are all like new sections that we didn't have before. So Cindy, do you mind scrolling down a little bit? Thank you. Uh so. On equity, each school will ensure that family and community enga- engagement strategies are responsive, informed by stakeholder feedback and reflect the unique needs of students, families and communities of the schools. Honor the culture, experience and humanity of students, parents, families and communities. Include the diverse perspectives of students, families and community. And then provide interactions for all students, parents, families, regardless of, and then all those different areas. Um and so that just is to ensure that we are equitable in our communication. And then if you can scroll down a little bit further, Cindy. Uh you'll see decision-making. So PGCPS will regularly engage stakeholders in district-wide initiative initiatives, issues and programs. Each school will regularly provide opportunities for parent, family and staff to participate in meaningful dialogue. And decision-making related to school-level initiatives and programs. Each school is encouraged to uh establish a recognized organized parent group if one does not exist. Um and we, not all our schools do have like PTAs or PTOs. And then if you scroll down a little bit further. Um I think we're getting close to the end. And then at least once every year, each school must hold a public meeting at a reasonable time in which our parents and families will be invited to learn about school-level priorities, academic standards. Information that helps families become stronger partners in the education of their children. And then we have another section called Parents and Family Responsibility, which we did have in the current policy. This is uh slightly changed, but it's very similar. And if you scroll down, Cindy, just so I can see the whole section. Uh wait, go back up a minute, go back uh to one. Okay, thank you. Ensuring that their child attends school regularly and arrives on time, and that is really important. And I think the more we can. Stress that with parents so that they understand that's an important responsibility for them. It's just because we can't help their children if they're not in school, so it's important for them to be there. Then reviewing notices received by school and responding to school requests for information, providing updated accurate contact information at time of matter. And that again is a major concern. We don't always, we they were, s- schools are sometimes stuck in a situation where they can't contact the parents because of uh contact information hasn't been updated. And then refraining from disruptive or disrespectful behavior and treating all members of the school with courtesy and respect. Taking part at school and community programs that provide for parents to participate in educational decision-making for their child. Uh scroll down a little bit further. Um uh teaching their child to respect the safety, property uh and rights of others and the application of refrain from engaging, intimidating, harassing or discriminating behavior. Discriminatory behavior and then maintain contact with the child's teacher and school principal about the progress of their child's education. So it is to to some degree a two-way street in terms of and having parents also be the ones that are engaging and. Um really accessing the information. And then the last thing has to do with implementation responsibility. And again, um. Both is this says the superintendent is uh um is directed to develop strategies to encourage involvement, parents, family, community, as well as directed to implement this policy by enacting administrative procedure. And then the super and this again is language from our pre our current policy. It says the superintendent shall report to the board annually on or before July thirty one, first on the application, implementation of this policy. That's it. That's in a nutshell, so.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Um and I I do want to just suggest that we find a way to. Include incarcerated parents in this policy.
Okay.
We have students whose parent or parents might be incarcerated. And I think we, unless there is some court order preventing um access to the student. I think we have to find a way to keep those parents informed as well. Because oftentimes uh children will speak to their parents who are incarcerated. And those parents still play a role in supporting their child, even though they are not in residence. So. I I hope we can work some language that we at least acknowledge incarcerated parents um in our policy. Uh the floor is now open for discussion and comments. Board members, uh please raise your hands if you have a question, discussion or just a comment. I see no hands raised. Uh then colleagues, I would ask, uh should we move to action on this policy or keep it open for further discussion?
I move that we um move forward with action on this policy as a as amended and outlined by uh Ms. Welsh tonight. Thank you.
Second.
Moving seconded, are there any objections? If none, Ms. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on Policy fifteen hundred. And bring them back to the next Policy and Governance Committee meeting for action. Moving on to agenda item four point five, policy, I'm sorry, four point four, uh policy fifteen hundred. Parent and Community Advisory Council.
Uh I'm sorry, um Sharon Field, um just a question. Did you just say that we're bringing it back for action in this committee or taking it to the board? I just missed some, I think I missed some.
The next Policy and Governance Committee meeting for action.
Thank you.
Moving on to item four point four, policy fifteen hundred. Parent and Community Advisory Council, I yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to update us on policy fifteen hundred.
Okay, um uh so if you scroll down, Cindy, um this was up at the last meeting too. So this is, we'll just keep scrolling down till we reach um, it starts in standards. Um so um what was added collectively advises that the parent uh Community Advisory Council collectively advises the board and the superintendent. Um in their process and then um. This I this was here before, actually. The members shall reflect geographic, racial, ethnic, um cultural and gender diversity of the county that came from um House Bill ten seventy nine. And then if you scroll down further. It says, okay, it says that uh this, so we have one that um um statement was last time about um in terms of vacancies. And is having a timeframe for to fill vacancies. So what I put, and of course, it's certainly whatever you want to put, we can put there, but. If any of the above appointed member positions become vacant at any time during the year, the board will advertise the vacancy noted later than one month of being notified of the vacancy. Upon receipt and review of the submitted applications, the board shall appoint a member recommended by the superintendent to fill the vacancy. Um so that was to address the idea of the vacancies. Then number three. It says the board will designate a board member and the student board member to serve as a liaison to the to the PCCAC. So that was another change. And then um Cindy, um you can keep scrolling down, um oh biannually, but I think um. We did talk about that. And then uh the last meeting, and then keep scrolling down. Um this piece. So I put in, now this is the same language that's sitting in the last policy we looked at, but the board and the superintendent will consult regularly, but not less than quarterly with the parent, community advisory council. And they meet more frequently by mutual agreement. So it again is giving. Instead of this vague language in terms of just sort of advisory capacity, it actually puts a little meat behind it so that um there is communication going on. Um with between the board, superintendent and the um PCCAC. And then we can go a little bit further. I think that was the very last change that I made. Keep uh can you scroll down just a little bit further, Cindy? I think that is it. That was that is for the recommendations at the last meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Um so this policy of committee members. Uh there are, there are one real concern that I currently have because our Parent and Community Advisory Council is out of compliance. With our current board policy in terms of the representation of the appointed members needing to have. Um be a parent of a child in the district. And so that's something that will have to be addressed. Because I think that we have to um align PCCAC with our current policy. So I just want to 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 make that clear. Um I do see uh, we're gonna open up for discussion and comments. I do see Board Member Rivera Forbes uh hand raised.
Thank you, Chair. Uh I just wanted to add a recommendation. I know before there was discussion and I asked if the student member of the board can be added. As a liaison, which I believe is very important. However, I know with the district steering committee, the student member of the board has an opportunity to appoint a designee. To attend certain meetings on their behalf, and I'm wondering if that can be added into this policy.
So uh like the student board member or um designee or slash designee, something like that?
Yes, that this, that serves on the student member of the Board Advisory Council or a student leader.
Okay, we will certainly uh take that under advisement. Board Member Rivera Forbes. Uh I see, uh I'll call on committee members first, uh Vice Chair Briggs.
Thanks so much. Um uh Chair Fields and um Chair Mickens Murray, if I address any of your your things and just feel free to kind of double. Click on what I'm saying. Um I just wanted to say that, Ms. Welsh, we've had this discussion already about the PCCAC um um policy. And I do know that Chair Milhouse um for PCCAC is watching this as well as other PCCAC members. So hopefully I do them justice in bringing up some of the issues that. We need to address. Um and thank you so much for what you've already addressed so far. So the policy, I want to say the policy as it stands does not address um. What we talked about before, the oddities, oddities like whether or not a P- a PCCAC member has a child in the system at the time of the application. Or if that child may not be a senior, maybe a senior, meaning they would only have uh or on the on, the PCCAC member will only be in compliance one year into their term. So having some language around both um. Whether their child is a senior at the time and how we think through that in the policy. Or also um, you know, if when they're applying for the application, let's say they're applying March of twenty twenty three. And their child graduated and is now in college in August twenty twenty three. Um they were in compliance when they applied, so we just wanna maybe have a way to address that. Um in whatever kind of legal language fits that. Um the other thing was um. You already addressed the vacancy, so I wanted to talk about the terms. Um so the terms right now are all kind of sequenced. Um. And so every PCCAC member as it stands right now, at the end of the school year, would have their be at their term limit, uh which means we'd have no, no PCCAC. And uh and what that also means is, because the first PCCAC meeting is in Au- in August, um there aren't going to be any PCCAC members. To have a first meeting because there's no one that's in the seat. So we'd need to address the policy hopefully. Before the end of the school year and then have something in there around having an application process likely in the spring. So that we can have uh PCCAC members secured um for the summer or w- once they come back in this in the school year. And then we would just need to stagger those um those seats. So of course, you know, we have everyone ending in two years, but we just said update the policy. So everyone was still in it this year, but we do the application process in March likely. And then for the new group, they'd have stagger term limits. So that's uh the recommendation, and we just need to have a language in there. And happy to answer any questions about any of that, Ms. Welsh, if you have uh any questions for me.
I I do. So when you say staggers, are you suggesting that it would be like uh one member would come in for two years, one would come in for three years or one for one year, two years? How would that work?
Yeah, it's, yeah, the math on that one is I I I'll be honest with you. So because it's like, right now, we would have the first PCCAC member. We could say two-year terms, right? And the the if they now two thousand twenty six would be the next term limit. Um. I don't know how we'd address that because we've already kind of accepted people, so we'd either have to give an extended term. I don't know how we'd address that because we've already kind of accepted people. So we'd either have to give an extended term to someone so that their term ends. Or we'd have to have a limit of one year for this incoming cohort. And then, you know, like we just look for new P C A members. So they'd only be in the term for one year and have that understanding. I don't know what the best way to approach that is, but that's what we'd have to do.
I I think one of the things we need to consider aside from staggering terms is just the appointment process when we receive applications. Because I think staggering the terms might be a bit difficult for an advisory council. So I just want to forewarn that. Because I do think that there's something about a cohort serving together as a council and getting to work together before you start bringing members in and out. That's just my thought. I see Committee Member Vice Chair Walker.
Yes, thank you so much. Let me put my hands down while I speak. I made just a list of a couple of things for recommendations. I first actually had a question. I wonder if this is in protocol for me to ask a question of Board Member Rivera Forbes, who made a recommendation at the student member. Okay, good. I just wanted to clarify with that. Does that mean that you can appoint someone? Are you talking from the board or another student to sit in your stead on this committee, please?
Essentially, what that means is I would be, as I am now, the liaison. But let's say I can't attend a meeting. I'd be able to ask a peer of mine to attend that meeting for me and to update me on what's in that meeting, but they wouldn't necessarily vote on my behalf or make decisions, but I can't vote as liaison anyway.
Oh, you mean a student, not a board member? I'm just trying to get student or board?
This will be a student.
Oh, a student leader who could. Yeah. Okay, that's already vetted through your council and works with you. Okay, got you. Okay, thank you for that clarification. I was, I didn't know if it was a board member that you were going to say, hey, can you come and stay? Got it? Thank you. Interestingly, I actually was going to ask, not that you're not a liaison, but that's, it's a requirement to serve as a liaison for our policy, I mean, a P C A. Let me explain a little bit more. What I wanted to do was remove the language that said is it a, it's a requirement. I think that we put a lot of requirements on our board, on our student board members as they come into the board. And I think that it should be an ask that if they would like to be on the, on this committee, the P C A, then it is optional for them to be. And so that is one recommendation I have to remove the requirement that is there. The second is to clearly define in our policy what the role of liaisons are for not only the student board member, but we also have a superintendent liaison too for administration and just to clearly define what the roles and responsibilities are for that. You know, like they're intermediary for adding needed for navigating P G C P S, et cetera. So we could just put kind of a one liner around that. It's not really said what their role is. Think that would be super helpful. The next is yes, I think actually, the board and the superintendent, perhaps we should consider that they be required to hold a joint meeting with the P C A before we have our priorities set so that we can make sure that we, if we need to intertwine what they're doing and their goals, that we can intertwine it into our goals for that year. So and then I think Ms. Welsh already said it is to meet quarterly. So that we can have some consistency within our policy that would drive accountability for us to, and that's for the board and the superintendent to hold that joint meeting with P C A at the beginning of the school year or prior to the, as we identify priorities for the year. And then meet quarterly. I think she already said that. I have here, don't ask me where it is, but it's somewhere in there, is the board and superintendent should regularly consult with the P C A. We have wording in there right now that says times to be determined by the Board of Education. I don't know that we necessarily need that, so we should probably look at that and make a recommendation as a board for that piece right there. I know we haven't yet, we do have plans now to meet with the P C A, the leadership piece for that, but we haven't to my understanding, and maybe it happened before I was here, but met with the P C A as a collective. And so it just, I don't want to always be out of compliance. So we have an opportunity now to just say, to to strike that to be determined by the B O E. That's a record. We could talk about where we go from here. Clearly, we're going to need to come back and look at this one more time. Let me continue with my list. The board. Oh, you know, we have this line in there, the board may establish additional advisory committee at its discretion. I don't know what that is, but we don't have any anything behind that. So we might want to just look at that or define it or something around that. I was like, ooh, what's that? I don't know what that is, but let's, let's talk about it.
Can you give me a number for that? Do you know where that?
That would be so good to give you a number. Let me get back to you on that. I think, it's like, under standards, I put some, like a little note about standards. I should pull it up. I'm so sorry, Ms. Welsh. I promised to get that to you tonight, hopefully even before.
That would help. Okay.
Okay, but it is somewhere, it's a last sentence in there. It just looks like it's made its way. It says the board may establish additional advisor.
I saw it. I saw it. Okay.
There you go. Okay, cool. The next is okay, I think I put section five, so hopefully it's right in the implementation process. I think that there might be a mishap with section four in that, oh, thank you, Cindy, in that section right there, because what is included in administrative support, item three, section five? Item three, section five. Y'all are really, we don't even have a section five for item three, do we? I gotta find it. It's somewhere, it says, what is, I'll be better prepared next time, you guys. I wrote my notes while I was moving in a vehicle. Sorry. What is included in administrative support? Let's just kind of define that. Maybe it's around bringing, thank you, administrative support. So it's around bringing some clarity to that. Section five, is that where we are? Excellent. Let's look at item five. And five, the board's office with cooperation of the board, maybe if we could consider adding including and the superintendent liaison right there. So it's an and right there. Again, this is so we can read it one more time and make sure it makes sense. Item five B, do we, yep, we have a five B. Let's go down. I can't see it on the screen. Thank you. Yeah, maybe if we have a rubric around that or some type of outline of what that criteria is, it says prepare for the board in advance of appointment briefing packets that contain lists of committees, et cetera, et cetera, and copies. And committee composition and copies. When I say rubric, it doesn't need to look like we're in school, but what's entailed in each of those? Just to drive a little bit more clarity on that. Okay, let's just write the note. I'll keep on going. We already have, in here, we already have that the superintendent will provide a liaison, right? Don't we have that already? Okay. Yes, I also agree that the policy should have something in there to address removal of members. So what mean, what? How do you stay in good standing on the P C A? Just like any, even even our own board should know what is in good standing, right? And so I think I can probably come up with a couple of things, but I think the committee can put one, two, or three things together. I'm talking to P C A committee. They can flush it out in their bylaws. It doesn't have to necessarily be put into right here inside of policy per se. But if we have something in policy that says that, you know, look at P C A bylaws for what is in good standing or for proper removal of members, that might be really helpful and prevent some discussions that we're having today. Thank you. Another, the last one on my notes was it was in my head. I forgot to write it down, but something around oh, some, and Mr. Briggs brought it up, which made me remember my thought is something around, see, our, our policy already states that it's a two-year term. And actually, it already states that you need to have your student, you need to have students within P G C P S. It says both of those things in our current policy now. One is at the top and one is a little further down from my recollection. But what it doesn't state is clearly, although I interpreted to mean that when you no longer have students inside of P G C P S, then you are no longer a member of this. That's how I interpret it to be. I see Judge, Judge Judy. I see Judy Mickens Murray is laughing and shaking her head, no, because I know we disagree on this key point, and she's on tape, so I could tell. So it's okay. It's okay. No worry. However, what I want to be able to articulate inside of there for clarity, so we don't have this same discussion going forward, is that your role is for two years and because you're P C A, which is parent advisory, that we can state clearly that in the event that within your term that you no longer meet the criteria that's already outlined inside of our documentation, which is this right now, which is the requirement to have students there, no matter when in your term, then that that then becomes vacant. Therefore, we will proceed with the vacancy requirements that are already within our policy. It's not specifically outlined, although you can see point one and then point ten at the bottom, both of those are in there. But if we could just clearly articulate it, it'll, it'll be super helpful. Those are all of the things I have written down for P C A. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Walker. I see Dr. Miller, Juanita Miller's hand raised. Dr. Miller, is your hand still raised? If not, I will move on to Board Chair Mickens Murray.
Thank you, Chair Fields. I appreciate the opportunity. I think since you're looking at this policy, now is the time to clarify all of the things that Vice Chair Walker just mentioned, especially if you're going to put volunteers off of a committee that they volunteer for. Especially if the volunteers meet the criteria when their term starts. And if their child graduates the first year, it must be clear that if if you really want them to be off and not have a two-year appointment, then that needs to be codified, I believe, in this policy. Because I think we have, it could become punitive, and we don't want things to be punitive to volunteers that help the school system. Second, I noticed that there was a mention of the superintendent and the board, and I'm thinking that you're thinking of the board as a whole meeting with this group. Understand this. It's also an opportunity to codify in the policy, the purpose of this committee. Because in the legislation, and I don't know if it's ten seventy nine or the other one, four thirty seven, but it's one of them. It does say that this board can have several community organizations. Because this county is so large, I don't think that we should limit ourselves to one if there's an opportunity to have some task forces, some other opportunities for parents to serve. So all I'm suggesting is, in this particular instance, we must really determine the purpose of this organization, P C A. We must also determine if the, if the superintendent and the board, the whole board is going to meet with this committee two or three times a year, then that's a separate meeting from our regular board meetings. That needs to be codified as well, if that is the pleasure of this group. Also, with the liaison, I always saw liaison as bringing information back and forth, but that's, that definition definitely needs to be included in this policy. With the superintendent and the board having a liaison, to me, that should be constant communication with the superintendent and this board, because the liaison should be bringing information back to this board, sharing whatever it is that the committee is discussing, voting upon, and wanting the superintendent and the board to know and to include as they reason and make decisions. So it sounds to me like there's a lot of work to do with this policy. It sounds to me like if if you want this to be the, the all inclusive parent, community represent, representation for Prince George's County, then that's a heavy lift. I am thinking that other opportunities for parents to serve should be considered. So I'm offering all of that in this communication tonight as you are grappling with what this policy should look like, what you're really trying to accomplish with it. I know what the intent was in the beginning, but it looks like it has grown well beyond what I thought the intent was. So maybe, I see it as an opportunity. I don't, I hope it's not an opportunity to put in punitive measure, measures for the board. And then finally, I saw where the superintendent, if there is a vacancy, the superintendent would replace the individual. Well, in the initial appointment, it's the board member of the district that is choosing the individual. So I, I see that as kind of a kind of a conflict, maybe. I don't know. But it all goes back to what is the purpose of this organization. Okay, thank you.
At this time, I'm going to go back to, I think I see Board Member Dr. Juanita Miller's hand raised again. Dr. Miller?
Yeah, in the earlier discussion, there was a concern about a person's, a P C A member's student graduating or what have you. We don't, we want to have a committee. And it is an all volunteer committee. And sometimes you may have to have a suspension of the rules in that if you don't have any new applicants, you allow that person or to extend that person's term or time on that committee. I think we're putting a lot more into this than is really, well, it's, it's necessary, but it's, you know, it's we have to look at how we are going to recruit people to serve on these committees and offer them some incentive for serving on the committee rather than looking at, quote, the punitive actions that would take place because of a time change or a situation change in terms of no longer having, quote, a student in the school system. So that was the contribution. I couldn't get my mic on, but that was the contribution, one of the contributions I wanted to make. And I concur with a lot of the comments that Board Member Walker offered. Thank you, Ms.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. I'm going to recognize two of our four colleagues who are not on this committee but who have joined us tonight. First, we'll start with Dr. Zapor Miller. Dr. Zapor Miller, are you there?
Sorry, I couldn't get off mute. Good evening. Thank you so much. I just wanted to speak to one of the areas that Board Chair Jukic McKins Murray spoke to regarding the superintendent appointing, should there be a vacancy? I would like to offer for consideration that the board member for that district do that because it is important that we hear the voice of our constituents. So should one member decide to leave early or whatever the circumstances are to have someone else from that district represented, represented so that we have a voice from our constituents. I just wanted to offer that. Thank you so much for recognizing.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. I see Board Member Boozer Struthers hand raised.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks for recognizing me. I just wanted to speak to a couple of points. One is I agree with Dr. Zapor Miller around the nine seats that that the board members, to match the board member districts and that we have already had that experience of recommending applicants in this first round. I certainly think we're learning some things, but I do want to go back to the purpose of the, the nine seats being parents who are active in schools that that was really the driving, you know, mission around getting this back up and running, that we have many board members who are not, who don't currently have children in the schools, and they felt like they wanted more voices and parents to officially weigh in on decision making because they are impacted every day by having children in the, the schools. I definitely. I uh, definitely think that those nine seats should be protected in that way. I think this policy was intended that way. I think we're out of policy. And I do think that, given the large number of parents in each of our districts, literally thousands, um, you know, in my district, Northwestern High School, I literally have 2,000 or plus 3,000 parents caregivers. Like, so the idea that as board members, we could not recruit a parent who has experience into these seats, I think is just not, you know, been a very good look of, of late um, for this board around arguing around this. And you know, we thank parents for their service, but if their student graduated or if they were never in compliance, then thank you, you know, thank you so much for helping us get this off the ground. But the voice of parents who have the everyday experience of interaction in the buildings is what the point of this was. This is what the urgency was, to get it back off the ground. So I just urge everyone on this committee to remember that and to continue to talk to parents who could sit in these seats. And, you know, in my case, um, you know, I'm very happy with the representation that T. Carter Ross is bringing as a parent of, of now a senior, because he's been through all the grade levels. But he also has organizational development experience, and that was um, you know, a criteria that I thought was important for year one, because I knew there'd be bylaws and other criteria. But for the next round, when, when T. Carter Ross cycles off, it's highly likely that as the district board member, that I would have a different set of um, ideas around where the organization, where the committee is settling and where the, what skills are needed from that point moving forward. And again, there's hundreds, thousands of parents in District Three. So I just want to make a strong plea for compliance with this policy and have nine parents sitting in those seats soon. Um, so that, that's all. Thank you so much, Chair Fields. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer Strutter. I'm going to go to Board Member Adam Stafford, who has joined the meeting.
Yes, hi, everyone. Um, I'm just really so excited to hear all of this discussion around the PCAC. Um, sorry, I'll be on camera in just a moment. Uh, you know, when this was originally, I originally brought this forward, you know, the goal was for this group uh, really to provide the board with feedback um, and input um, from community members. And so, you know, just hearing the parent-based policy that was discussed tonight was so exciting, because a lot of that work came out of the PCAC. Um, I just wanted to say that I think we should uh, revisit what, what Dr. Zepora Miller mentioned regarding having um, the board uh, member for that district, having the authority to appoint someone. Um, because I think that it can help really expedite the, the process of getting folks in those seats, um, even if that, you know, appointment is just temporarily until the next, you know, elect, or the next uh, maybe cycle comes for uh, board members, uh, PCAC members to fall off of the, the board, um, the advisory board. Um, I think that could be a solution as well. But overall, I think that this is a great opportunity right now to refine this policy, to make it stronger. And um, I just appreciate the dialogue, so I just wanted to add that. And I, I'd just like to say, I think this was year one, so I think like, let's just give ourselves as a board some grace. Uh, and, you know, really work towards uh, getting into compliance and, you know, possibly just sunsetting off people um, that are on the committee until maybe their term ends. So that's just something for you all to consider, but I, I think this is great. We're having this discussion.
Thank you.
Uh, Chair Fields, I think you're muted.
I'm sorry. I see Vice Chair Bree's hand raised the second round.
No problem at all. So I just wanted to um, offer some clarity, um, because I think that we've not had this conversation um, and wanted to clarify what happened in the previous selection process for these seats, as we're kind of refining the policy and making updates to things that need to be addressed. Um, there, there, the, the previous board members that were selected were selected based on the previous policy from 2021, which did require that there be at least one child in uh, enrolled in the school system. Those board members that um, are um, not in alignment with the policy um, were never in compliance for the entire year that they served on PCAC. Um, and they were selected by the board. So that was a, that was a um, on our end. And I think there was a, a, an interpretation of how hard of a rule that was, that they have at least one child. Uh, so I think even as board members nominated, which is what happened, right? You, you had uh, board members that nominated for each of the districts. Um, that wasn't a clear point. Um, the other addition that I want to mention, and this is uh, from Ms. Welsh, is that if we, if we do have board members that are not in compliance in this particular scenario, there's eight months of school left. So the folks who, well, there's two ways we could approach that. One way is that we could have someone who's filled, filling that seat for eight months, and then we have another kind of application process and we look for new candidates. And again, that would be around March, so it'd be about five months into their term. They'd be looking um, to reapply, or they might not be selected. Or the other approach is we could use it as an opportunity to stagger terms. So for those seats that are not in um, an alignment, we could actually have that start the two-year term process. And then, you know, we'll have at least three seats that are filled and kind of go from there. Um, but I just wanted to say that I think it's a bit more nuanced. I think that it, it wasn't, at least from what I understand from talking to a number of different individuals who were both in the development of the policy, in the voting of the policy. I talked to Ms. Welsh, the, the actual updated policy wasn't ratified until, I think, October 2022, but the sitting PCAC members had their first meeting in August 2022. Um, so there were just a lot of pieces that I think, because this was like building the plane while you're flying it, um, small parts got mixed in. So I think that Chair Mickens Murray, Mickens Murray's point, um, I'm thinking about the workforce. If you hire someone and say, these are the terms of your employment, and I say yes to you, um, you know, because you met those requirements, and they say, oh, three months in, actually, I realize that you don't. There's, there's some accountability on our end, I think, too, as a board, to address that and to acknowledge the fact that we, um, you know, that the accidents happen or mistakes happen, or we didn't have a clear understanding. So I just wanted to add in that piece of color to however people are thinking about this. Um, and to let Ms. Welsh know that I think that's a consideration for the policy as well.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, I see uh, Committee Member, Board Member Rivera Forrester's hand raised.
I'm sorry, my hand must have stayed up.
Okay, no, no problem. Uh, I see Vice Chair Walker's hand raised.
Yes, thank you so much for my second round, which concludes all of the things. Um, what I was going to say is, as an example for District Nine, I know that my predecessor uh, appointed someone for this role, and she was phenomenal. Dr. Porter, shout out, in case you're looking at this tonight. Dr. Sharon Porter is phenomenal inside of her role. Um, however, what, what my predecessor did was take a look at how active she was in a participation inside of the community. She was so active that she thought she had kids inside the system, because she was so active. But recognizing that she didn't, when we talked, we started talking compliance, she stepped down, because she recognized I'm not in compliance, and it should really be for parents there. And so I'm using her as an example, one, because it's my district and I feel like I can, um, because she did step down and now we're in compliance. But the other reason that I'm saying that is, I am also in alignment with um, everyone who mentioned, I can't believe I forgot that on my list. Everybody who mentioned for the superintendent, like, we really should be the ones that choose the people that's inside of our district to be on there, knowing when they're in compliance and asking those questions. As uh, Board Member Shayla said today, this was year one, you guys, like, we conquered it. Now we can recognize what compliance looks like and feels like, so that we can put processes in place and make sure that we're adhering to our current policy until we have an opportunity to shift that. And I think that that is what's most important. Like, the fact is that it went defunct, because we didn't have parent participation. But now we have parents who want to participate, and we've become the stumbling block. We got to cut it out. Let's get ourselves in compliance, so that we can then start doing the work that they want to do, and um, they're volunteers, not getting paid. And so I'm excited that we have people that have already volunteered. I know for District Nine, my two people that apply, they're ready to hear back, and they haven't heard back yet. So I'm just excited to get ourselves back in compliance and just start doing the work that the PCAC is set for, and we're very clear on the work that they want to do and that they should do. Parents are the ones that's going to lead the system, and I'm excited to be in support of them. So hopefully, we can get this thing updated and, and, and streamlined and put out, so that we can get in compliance and move forward. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Board Member Walker. I see uh, Board Member Boozer Strutter's hand raised.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much, Chair Fields. Yeah, I thi, I think um, Board Member Vice Chair Walker just um, really um, you know, got to what I want to say. I mean, that, the, that the nine did not all have children in schools, I think was something that was, I, not very clear to me until recently. So, you know, I'm, I, you know, whatever pathway got us there, that we didn't know that not all nine had children. Um, and that, you know, wasn't something we, like, checked off the forms and were able to ask questions about that. I mean, that, that's now months ago, and I know we went through lots of policy changes and bylaw. Us, and so I'm just giving everyone and giving some grace here. But I think now that we are here where we are, and we have a very clear policy, like, let's just, let's just get into compliance as quick as possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you, colleagues. I think we have uh, exhausted discussion on this item. Um, so I would ask, uh, should we move to action as policy or keep it for further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we keep it for one, only one more round of further discussion, based on what uh, Ms. Welsh is taking back and going to update for the policy, just for one more review, um, and then go to action.
Is there a second?
I second. I second.
And properly move the second to bring this item back for discussion at the next Policy and Governance Committee, if there are no objections. I will ask Ms. Welsh to take the advisements, uh, the recommendations made tonight uh, by the committee on Policy 1500 and bring it back to the next uh, Policy and Governance Committee meeting uh, for further discussion. Uh, Board Members, I am going to uh, move an agenda item up. Um, Item uh, 4.6, because we do have uh, our former student member of the board who joined us tonight specifically for this item. Um, and he does have uh, another appointment. So if there are no objections, I'd like to move to uh, Policy 4.6, uh, Policy 9271, Student Board Member. I yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to update us on Policy 9271.
Okay, first, first I'd like to point out with this policy, with this bylaw, that we also had a policy, uh, 8261, that addressed the, the roles and responsibilities of the, of the student board member. So I basically, it says rights and privileges of a student board member, but much of what's in there goes to what, um, uh, 1079, when they're talking about the, I mean, it didn't address the specific thing, but it's referencing the, the responsibilities of the student board member in terms of, of, of voting or participating in the meeting. So um, after we go through this, uh, my recommendation would be to rescind 8261, because I think this incorporates both what was in, what was in, what it was in 271, and then what was in 8261. So um, the first thing is the policy statement, which um, um, was a new, and basically it's saying, first of all, that the sys, the school system, the Board of Education is committed to uh, ensuring that every student has a premier education, and that it's characterized innovated, relevant, and assess, accessible learning and development opportunities to build 21st century um, competencies. And the reason I incorporated that, that does come from our strategic plan, um, as well as the next statement. But the reason I incorporated that was because of the fact that um, the student board member adds a lot to the conversations that go on within the board uh, meetings and the board's decisions. However, it's also a wonderful uh, opportunity for the student board member from the standpoint of, of learning, uh, learning opportunity and developing 21st century competencies, um, and becoming um, uh, distinguished learner, leader, uh, voice of social justice, advocate for humanity. So I did incorporate a lot of our strategic plan language to, to talk about that in relationship to the student board member. And then if you move down to the next um, section, and also, I also uh, stated, and this again is from the previous, uh, from the current 9071, it says, "The board also recognizes the service rendered by a student board member and acknowledges that board membership requires time equal to or greater than uh, state requirements for a credit." Um, and so if the board member, if the student board member would like to, they are given the option to receive one unit of social studies credit for serving on the board. So I uh, included that, because that was in our recurrence um, policy or bylaw. And then um, I uh, said that our purpose is to, this, of this bylaw is to provide guidelines for the election rights, privileges of a student board member, and the professional development requirements for a student, student board member. So then if you move down to standards, or, well, we have definitions, which just is, oh, so there is reference to the Regional Association of Student Government, and that's the county umbrella, Student Government Organization for High School and Middle School Student Government Association. So just so everyone understands. And then, of course, term, I just pulled that, because that language is also uh, within the professional development uh, policy that we uh, discussed last month. So I wanted to make for uniformity's sake, I include that. So then, um, basically, the whole, the election of a student board member comes directly out of the law and talks about the fact that the student board member must be in 11th or 12th grade. The 1079 did change it from two weeks to three weeks, as far as filing a nomination form um, for a special election. Then the nomination forms are available at the, either at the high schools or um, the office of the President of the Regional Association of Student Government. And then the delegates to the Regional Association will annually, annually select two candidates for the um, board, student board member. Um, then following that, those two candidates, all secondary students, grades six through 12, will vote for one of the two candidates, and that's how we end up with a student board member. And then I, if you scroll down, Cindy, um, included the fact that the uh, student board member serves a term of one year, beginning at the end of the school year. Now, in number seven, I incorporated, because we, because our Vera, who was our student board member last year, he was actually elected to be the student board member twice, when he was in 11th grade and 12th grade. And I know there were a lot of questions initially, like, can the student board member serve two terms? So I did put language in there, saying the student board member may be in the, in office for two terms if the above requirements are met, uh, because you'd have, still have to go through the same process. Um, and um, and so then, as you move down, and I just imprint that, if you, wait, stop one second, Cindy, and go up just a tad. Um, right there. So policy, I did put, that'll come out, Policy 8261, but I just wanted to make reference to it, because um, it, it allows you to know that that was coming from that policy. So it says that the student board member is vested with advisory rights to provide the board with direct input concerning their thoughts and feelings of students. Then I incorporated the new language from 1079, which says, "The student board member may vote on all matters before the board, except those related to collective bargaining decisions, teacher and administrator disciplinary matters uh, under 6202, and then other personnel matters." And then, if you've scrolled down a little bit further, again, this is language from 8261. Cindy, you mind scrolling down a little bit? Thank you, thank you. It says, "A student board member uh, um, shall further have the following specific rights," and then if you scroll down, it talks about um, "Full participation discussions that the board convene at regular meetings or work sessions to offer a second main motion or amendments thereto, and to indicate an expression of being either in affirmative or negative on any motion that has been called to question upon vote, being tabulated, with the understanding that it would be in those areas, in every area, except those three that were accepted from that are exceptions under 1079." And then, um, this is also number four. "On an affirmative vote of a majority of elected appointed board members, the board may determine if a matter before the board relates to a subject, the student board member may not vote on, vote on, under Section 4B3," which takes you back up to where you were before. Actually, excuse me, that's going to have to be uh, B2, because I did switch those. I will take, take care of that. Anyway, then, um, because um, Board Member Fields had asked about ensuring a language was uh, related to the professional development and conferences, if you'll scroll down, I did put a section in there that says, "In accordance with policy blah, blah, blah," which is our other policy we're working on right now, professional development of board members. Um, "The student board member shall complete professional development in the required areas annually." And then it says that the board members encourage, the student board members encouraged to attend the professional development conferences related to dues and responsibilities, "The registration fees and um, other expenses related to attending the professional conference will be provided if the student board member provides documentation indicating the conference will be addressing any of the topics." So that, again, comes directly out of the professional development for board members, that policy. And then, under it though, I said, "Reimbursement for travel and other expenses related to accompanying the student board member on out-of-town conferences will be provided to the adult shop room with the appropriate documentation." Board member on out of town conferences will be provided to the adult shop room with the appropriate documentation. Cause, um, uh, Chair, uh, Fields, that's what you had requested if we would incorporate language there. And then if you scroll down for further, we have the implementation responsibilities. Um, and it says the superintendent's responsible for ensuring that the election process for the student board members implemented, of course, of course, with this bylaw. So, um, that's basically it. So if anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. And, and I just want to state that, um, our student member of the board is our colleague. And we treat her as an equal colleague, um, uh, with the exception of those few items where she cannot or he cannot cast a vote. So we wanted to make sure that our policy aligned with that. And that our policy also addressed legislative changes that were made to the rights and privileges of student board member. In the last legislative session, so that there is no confusion about the rights of our student member of the board. Um, I'm going to open the floor for any comments to discussion. And first, I want to call upon our student member of the board if she has any comments, since this. Is a policy that directly impacts her service on the board. Board member Rivera Forbes, if you have any comments, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. So I actually first want to thank my predecessor, Alvaro Saran Ruiz. If it wasn't for him, um, I really, really, really don't think we could have made it this far. So I am very, very grateful to you and rallying all of us up together to testify and advocate. To move the student member of the board's rights to where it really should be. So thank you so much. Um, I also want to thank. The board members who played a huge role in helping Alvaro in this process as well and really supporting him. Because it is extremely important that these mob has an active voice on the board. And as you said, Chair, that we are treated as a colleague, which we are. So thank you so much. I am so excited to know that the next generation of smobs will have the opportunity to vote on the budget and so much more.
Thank you. And I'm also going to call upon, um, our former student member of the board. Alvaro Sarun Ruiz, our University of Maryland student, uh, happy to see you tonight, and, uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Chair Fields, um, and hello, everyone. Nice to see everyone today. And hello to Ms. Boyd and Mr. House, who I haven't had the pleasure to meet formally yet. Um, but no, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Welsh, for putting together and compiling this policy. Um, I know this was one of the major things in the second part of my term last year, and. So I'm really excited to finally see you as a board policy draft. Um. I did have a couple of points, but I did want to bring them up after board members posed their questions. Um, but no, thank you, uh, for having me today, and I'm happy to also answer any question that may arise.
Well, uh, since you have, since you have the floor, uh, why don't you, uh, forward your, your suggestions at this time?
Yes. So my first question, Ms. Welsh, um, will we be, will you all be updating the, um, corresponding AP? Um. Cause I know there was, I believe there is a student board member AP that accompanies this board policy. Um, because I know within the bill as well, there are two points, one on. Having equal campaign funds for the two candidates for the general election. Um, and then another point on educating the voting students on the whole voting process. Uh, well, well, educating the sixth through twelfth grade students who are voting on the voting process. Um, and I don't think I saw that within, um, the draft policy, so I didn't know if that would be in the AP, um, in terms of more specifics.
It can definitely be put into the AP.
Okay. And then, um, I noticed that it also stated, um. All secondary students, grades six through twelve, um, what exactly would the definition of secondary be?
Well, generally, secondary is six through twelve. When you're looking at students, um, and I actually followed up with, uh, Richard Moody, Moody, who is the advisor to your regional association. Um, to double check that, and he said it was definitely six to six through twelve. Do you, do you think it's different than that?
So I know, looking at the bill itself, it did say six through twelve, but my concern was with schools. Um, who are K through eights, um, if they were to be excluded. Um, because I just wouldn't want an issue to arise later on where those students aren't able to vote, because I'm not. You know, I don't know what the classification of those schools are specifically, and I don't want, you know, this language to prohibit them from voting.
I, well, we can ensure that through the, that through the AP that they are definitely included, because if it's six through eight, then. The sixth graders and the seventh graders in those buildings should, and eighth graders should absolutely still get a right to vote, you know, not, you know, just because they're in a building like that. Um. I don't think it eliminates them from being secondary, but I will put a note to make sure that that we can clearly specify that in the AP.
Ooh, and, um, all right, thank you. Those were all my comments. I think the draft policy does a great job of. Uh, following the bill, and then I love the addition on the reimbursements for conferences. So thank you, uh, Ms. Welsh. And we remember Mickey's Mary for bringing that up as well.
Thank you, sir. I see board member, uh, Chair, Mickey's Murray's hand raised.
Thank you, uh, Chair Fields. I want to commend you for bringing forward the reimbursement for, uh, chaperones. Thank you so much. I think that was a, a, a missing important piece. To our student board member receiving, um, the educational development that the rest of us receive. To be, uh, accompanied by a chaperone. So thank you. Thank you for the foresight, and thank you for leading that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, I believe I see board member Dr. Zappora Miller's hand raised.
Good evening. I also wanna, um, thank you, Board Member Fields, for adding the chaperone. This is a minor tweak. I wonder whether I, I noticed that it says for, um, travel. Um, outside, I wonder whether we should also consider giving. If the chaperone has been transported back and forth to the board, generally, we would get reimbursed for mileage or if the student. The card reimbursed for mileage. So should we consider the same for the whoever's, um. Transporting the student to different, um, locations for doing the work of the board, so they can be reimbursed for, for mileage. So that was the first. Uh, first piece that I wanted to just, um, offer for the committee to consider. The second one is a little more complicated. It might, um. They, they offer the student, um, a social studies credit. I wonder whether we could consider, and I don't know whether this would entail working, asking the superintendent to look into it, but. Consider having the option for dual enrollment so that the student can receive college credit. Um, for this experience, because the amount of work that they, they do is similar to a probably introductory, uh, college course. And if you work with a college or university, I'm sure they will actually ask to give them a college credit.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Miller. I would, I would be open to looking into both of those situations. Um, and I think when we say out of state travel, of course. But I also, you know, think about the maid conference that was just held in Annapolis. So it could be an in-state conference that you have to have. A chaperone with a student member of the board. So I think we just need to. Quick the language a bit, and you bring up a valid point about transportation to board meetings. If the student member doesn't drive, someone has to drive the student member to the board meeting, and we certainly should reimburse, um. For travel in, in that case. Um, and in terms of dual enrollment, I think, um, Alvaro will tell you. That this is a very detailed position for a student. Um, and certainly, um, it is, uh, I think equivalent to college level, introductory college level work. Um, if you were a freshman, like you did, this would be the equivalent. So, uh, that's something that I, I think we can also look into. Uh, board members, if there's no, if there's no, uh, further discussion, oh. Do I see, uh, board member, I see board member, so I see, uh, Mr. Sarun Ruiz's hand raised.
Yeah, so no, I just wanted to second Dr. Miller's point on the dual enrollment piece. I think that would be something really cool. Um, especially now, um, I'm a public policy major, and actually, one of my required credits. Um, courses I have to complete is a internship course where I do an internship and they will give me the credit for that. A better internship than actually, you know, having to do government work. Um, and so students would be given the opportunity to, you know, submit for that credit at that time while they're serving as student board members. I think that would be something really cool. So if we, you know, if that could be, you know, worked on, you know, I don't know. How it would look like in terms of PGCC or UMD, or, um, I just think it would be something really beneficial for students.
Thank you. And I see a board member, Rivera Forbes' hand raised.
Um, I do have a question and also a statement, just seconding my predecessor and board member. Supporter Miller, I definitely think that that would be a great contribution to the student member of the board. And just in the roles that we do play, because it does require a lot of time while also being a full-time high school student. And still trying to get the high school experience, and if you're a senior doing college apps and so much more. So it's definitely a way that we can really learn more and receive, um, from the position. A question I did have is, I know the student member of the board does get a scholarship. I'm wondering if that is mentioned in this policy as well, or if that's in the AP.
Not that I know of, and I wasn't even aware of the fact that they did get a scholarship. So I don't know if the board, if the committee members would like to include that into this policy. We can certainly do that.
I think we could include it in the policy or the AP, but I think it should be stated somewhere.
Okay.
Can you please repeat what should be stated? I'm sorry, I missed that one.
It is stated in a, uh, I don't have the policy number, but the policy that we have that, uh, the current policy. Uh, that, uh, dictates what the, uh, role of the students in the handbook to. But the scholarship has always been a part from my understanding.
Yeah. Sorry, I don't.
And I was just. Yeah.
Uh. Seron Ruiz?
I, I did just want to give a bit of context in terms of the scholarship. Um. I think if it were to be completed, it would have to be a joint venture between the board and the county council, because it is funded by the county council. Um, that's why it's not really seen through an AP or a board policy, because it doesn't come out of the school system. It comes from the county council. And, um, I'm not sure even if the county council has it explicitly written, um, it's been a thing that's been done. Um, but if you would like to do something, it would be something that should be a partnership between the board and county council.
Yeah. Uh, board member Rivera Forbes.
Oh, um, I just wanted to say duly noted from the, um. Board members that gave some more insight and from Alvaro Saran Ruiz as well. That is good information to know, so we can ensure that the next student member of the boards all have the same opportunities.
Thank you. Colleagues, uh, I will ask for a motion, um. To determine whether we move to action on this policy or keep it for further discussion. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move that we take action on this policy.
There a second?
People, a discussion, well, get a second for, I second. Well, I can't second it, because, um, my, my discussion involves updating, well, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I, did you recognize me, Mr. Chair?
I, I, I did when you were going to second the motion, but I, I will recognize you. We, we, we try to be a little bit informal in this, in this committee, so I will recognize.
Thank you. Um, that's interesting point that, uh, Alvaro, uh, um, brought up in terms of collaborating with the county council. Um, my understanding when I was chair was that this was something that the, uh, in collaboration with the board, that the superintendent. Uh, did, and, um, I really prefer that it stay within the board. So before we approve sending this forward, I'd like to have the language put back. Or put in, uh, the policy that the board. Uh, in collaboration with the superintendent, if you want to include him, but, um. The board out allocate the, uh, funding for the scholarship, because I think it's, it's five. About five thousand, we can specify the amount, but I would rather that this be, be a project of the boards.
May I, may I make this suggestion? Um, if the, um, board member who made the motion. Uh, would amend the motion to just bring this back for discussion so that we can clean up our language, clarify the situation around the scholarship. Um, to bring this back for further discussion at our next policy and governance committee meeting. I think that would buy us a little time to make sure that we have everything in order. That is supposed to be in this policy. So I would ask board member Rivera Forbes. Uh, if she would be willing to amend her motion to bring this back for further discussion at the next policy and governance committee meeting.
I would like to move to amend my emotion to bring this policy, the student member of the board policy, back to the next policy and governance committee meeting. For further discussion.
Second, is there a, is it, we have a second from Dr. Miller. Are there any objections? Hearing none, um, as well as please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight. Um, on this policy ninety two seventy one and bring it back to the next policy and governance committee meeting for further discussion. We are going to go back to. Item four point five, policy seventeen hundred, disability issues advisory board. I yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to update us on policy seventeen hundred.
So, um, I have that, I, I, um. May name revisions or anything to the policy because I did a little bit of research, um, and it goes back to the conversation that, um. That, um, actually that Chair Mickey's Murray talked about in terms of the fact, well, doesn't the, doesn't the board have many other advisory, uh, committees? Or councils? And actually, uh, one that is mandated by law is the, um, uh, Special Education Advisory, uh, Council. That's a, that's a major, um, council that is, that it meets regularly and. Provides input on probably everything that operates in the world of special education, including accessibility to the buildings. Um, and so they, um, I did speak with the associate superintendent of special ed to get a better understanding, and. Um, she felt that, that to, um, that really that the policy, um, that has to do with the, um. What's the number of it? Seventeen hundred disposits issues advisory board is really redundant, because number one, by law, we are required to have a special ed of a, uh. Special Education Advisory, uh, Council, and that, that group actually is addressing the issues that are listed in, under policy seventeen hundred. And on top of that, she did, um, the big issues about accessibility, and so the, uh, associate superintendent shared with me. That they actually keep a database on the accessibility of all of the buildings across the school system. And when, um, there's students that come in that have, um, additional issues, they have their physical therapists that are evaluating continuously in terms of how accessible each building is. Um, and, um, and if there's a need, they will actually work with operations and have different buildings. You know, whatever construction needs to happen to provide that accessibility. Um, and then on top of that, she is in the associate superintendent is on a committee, which involves staff from. The, um, operations group, um, in terms of, uh, construction and, and facilities. Uh, in terms of looking at the accessibility of each building as to ensure that every one of our buildings meets the ADA requirements. Uh, now, saying that ADA does, to clarify that if you have very old buildings, then those requirements are very minor and maybe non-existent because of the age of the building. And the capability of making it, uh, accessible, but in general, that, the, the most of our buildings, they go through that entire process. So, um. Her recommendation was that you already have this committee, which takes their job very, very seriously. Um, and might actually even be a little offended if you set up a second advisory committee. When you have the one that they're relying on, I mean, they discuss budget items, they discuss like everything. So, um, I don't know, but I wanted to put that out there before going through and starting the process of making revisions.
You, Ms. Welsh, um, I'm gonna open this up for, for comment, but what I'm hearing from you as well, so we should probably. You, Ms. Welsh, um, I'm gonna open this up for, for comment, but what I'm hearing from you as well, so we should probably. Just table this. Um, so we, we have a clear understanding that we're not creating a duplicative. Um, committee, um, that we certainly don't want overlap if we have a committee that is addressing. The areas of concern that this advisory board would uh, cover. Um, I see board member, just want to make sure we don't have any committee members hands raised first. Okay, I see board member Adam Stafford.
Hi, um, I am gonna yield most of my time to board member Jocelyn Rout. Um, we're bringing this forward, you know, the committee and organization that exists. I think it's a wonderful group. Um, however, the board. Eh, as um, Ms. Welsh just mentioned, we are supposed to have a, an advisory board that focuses on special education issues. And we don't have that presently. The board does not have an advisory board or any committee that's focusing on these issues. And I have, since I've been on the board, we've never had a presentation from any group. Um, regarding special education and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if anyone uh, who's been on here uh, with me. Uh, can, you know, speak to that. Um, but this is a major issue. And I know board member Rout will speak more to this, but I think that we, at, you know, we haven't received any reports on any collaboration that has happened. Between this advisory group and the school system in a way that has been on the same level as our PCAC or our ethics board. Um, and I think that this is part of our oversight work and part of our charge um, in some of our basic commitments. And so I'll turn it over, I will um, I'll, I'll yield my time now, but I, I know board member Rout will be recognized next.
Board member Rout, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair Fields. Um, first of all, I just want to uh, thank the committee. For allowing me to be before you today. Um, board member Adam Stafford. And I um, are coming to you with a deep concern for the welfare and education of our students that have disabilities. Um, that are scholars of Prince George's County Public Schools. While we commend the existence of policy seventeen hundred addressing the issue. It's regrettable that the disability advisory committee, as it currently stands, remains defunct. Uh, limiting the oversight and accountability that's crucial for providing essential support to our most vulnerable students and their parents. So students with disabilities face a unique challenge that requires specialized attention um, and resources. And as a community, it's our moral and ethical response, ethical responsibility. To ensure that every student, regardless of their abilities, receive the education and high quality support that they deserve. Um, as pre- as previously stated by board member Adam Stafford. We are um, very aware um, of the, the, the district's um. Advisory committee, but the board does not presently have that uh, advisory function and committee. Such as the PCAC um, and the ethics and um, the position of students. Um, needing um, needing supports and services. Who may have um, unique abilities and needs. Um, can be addressed in a functional disability advisory committee. The challenges that are faced by students with disabilities are numerous, including um. Uh, appropriate accommodation, specialized teacher training, infrastructure, um. Capital improvements, needs, maybe, maybe not, and then also inclusive policies. Um, and so this particular um, wha- what I'm asking for today is this reenactment. Um, of this, of the dis- disability issue advisories committee would address all of those items. And they would go directly to the board. Um, I'm gonna give you an example during superintendent's house opening of schools presentation. At the beginning of our current school year, we learned that there's a growing number of students that have diagnoses. With autism spectrum disorder and their needs, which may identify specific resources. Um, so looking at that, the board would need to receive that information to make adequate. Um, decisions related to budget, curriculum, um, all supports as it relates to children with disabilities. An active advisory committee would serve as a channel for the voices and the concerns of parents, educators and experts in the field of special education. And, and it also would enable the necessary collaboration, oversight and accountability to implement more effective policies. By reestablishing this advisory committee, we can facilitate collaboration. By encouraging open communication and uh, collaboration among stakeholders, the community. Uh, to be enabled to provide information uh, to the board. Uh, also to ensure accountability because oversight is crucial to model the implementation of existing policies. Um, and the ever-evolving needs of students um, and their parents. As it relates to ensuring that the scholars have what they need. Um, additionally to foster innovation, um, so this committee would also look at. Um, innovative strategies and solutions and recommend to the board for addressing the unique challenges faced by our students with disabilities. And promoting transparency, um, because transparency is vital to building trust and confidence in our community. So there could be presentations of scoring as it relates specifically to uh, scholars with disabilities. Um, so today, uh, we're before you to uh, really to reestablish and empower. The disability advisory committee under policy seventeen hundred and doing so, we can collectively work. Towards providing a brighter, more inclusive future for all students in our Prince George's County Public School System. By looking at a profound impact in the lives of our most vulnerable students, helping them to thrive and succeed. Thank you so much for uh, the opportunity I yield.
Board member Walker.
Thank you. I am a proponent of having advocacy for our special needs um, students. And ensuring that we have a committee that is able to speak on their behalf and paying advocacy in, on their behalf where they are not able. I will tell you that over the last couple of weeks, if not months. We, um, the leadership of this board and through town halls and several other. Um, platforms have started to talk about what the gaps are in um, our student need population. And what their real needs are, to be clear. And so as we are hearing that, I am a proponent for having a PCAC like. Because I only know PCAC, I haven't been here for any other like other groups. But what I will say is that I am a proponent for having a group that can really get together and decide. What are the key um, community benefits, not only benefits, but advocacy and important needs. That we can then bubble up into expectations for our board. So in saying that, what I am saying is that I am an advocate of having that group. But I do feel as though we should have some criteria around it, the same as we do for PCAC. And with that being said, I, I will, even though I don't have time in my own entire life. But I will be able to, I will make myself available just because of the needs that have been in my district. And I'm seeing because of being on leadership that are the gaps of sit on this team in order to ensure that we can get ourselves. On track for that, in order to build something different. So I just wanted to put that out there. I don't know if it falls under policy and governance, quite frankly. But in the event that we need to write something up for what this committee could, would and feel like. Then I, I, I would be an advocate for that because we have, I think, too many outages that we're seeing inside of the district that we need to address. So I hope that's helpful and um, I hope I'm not signing up for too much, but I will take that on in order to get it started. Because I feel that we need some things in place in order to address this population that feels as though they're not heard and served inside of our. In some parts, quite frankly, because we're doing a lot inside of this space, but I feel like there's a little bit more that we can do in order to um. Address the gaps that we see right now.
Board member Phil. Board member, uh, Dr. Juanita Miller.
Uh, to the audience and to this committee, the Prince George's County does have a special education. Community act- uh, activist uh, organization, CCAP. And it has been in existence and they are operable. Uh, it's just that board members need to be made aware that this uh, committee does already exist. And they have submitted reports uh, to um, on, on what they have, their activities. Um, I pulled it up because I, I'm, I'm just surprised that board members uh, who are. You know, familiar with special education needs and because that's background, I do keep up with any um. Activities relative to advocacy for special needs populations. Also, the state has a state board of uh. Of commission for disability, uh, disabilities. However, back to Prince George's County, there is a, uh, is S E C A C. So there's no need for us to reinvent the wheel. The best thing I can do is I can provide uh, the information via um. Email to all the board members so that you will have a familiarity with this organization, the membership, et cetera. So it does already, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. It exists and they have submitted reports. Annually.
Doctor, Doctor Miller, uh, Ms. Welsh.
So I'm actually picking back on what Dr. Miller just said, um, and asked the question, do you want to have redundancy? Because the, that I know for a fact that that special ed advisory committee is very active and very advocacy-based. And um, drives a lot of times what's going on because they, they're just very vocal about the, the needs of their students. Um, and I, I didn't realize they did send in reports, but I was thinking since you already have. Instead of having two advisory committees operating, the one that's operating right now is driven by the law. The law says they must have this committee and they do, their council, um, and it has some, has requirements around it. I'm just wondering if they, instead of having two committees, that you would utilize that committee from a sta- standpoint of accountability. So that they then provide their reports. And I do know that way back prior to COVID. That um, Dr. Mason, who at that time was in charge of special education, that she brought, brought extensive reports to the board. Um, that would give you all like all this special education information too. So certainly that, I'm certain could also be reestablished. But I'm wondering if it would be helpful to gather some of the reports they have. We even possibly have um, associate superintendent Bowman, Bowman come and talk in more depth. Give you the details of who, like who is members of these, of the committee, you know, what does it represent? Uh, how they utilize the information, what the like agendas from their meetings, things like that. So you have a little bit more information before you move forward with a, a now you have two advisory committees on the same subject.
But may, may I, Mr. Chair, respond?
Uh, no, I want, I want to keep, I want to keep the order of questioning. I'll come back to you, uh.
Well, it's in reference to the commit, what she just said, let me, this one state.
Doc, Doctor Miller, please, 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 I, I will come back to you. We've been here for a long time tonight. And I just want to make sure we get through everyone who has not had an opportunity yet, but I will come back to you. Uh, Chairman, uh, McInnes Murray.
Thank you Chair, uh, Chair, uh, Fields. I support you Chair Fields. When you said maybe we need to table this. I think the disconnect is, I know about the group. What I don't know is how are they aligned with the board? I have not received the report from them. I have not received an audience from them. There has not been a special work session with them. So if that group, you're recommending, Ms. Welsh. Be the group for the board, then help us to see the alignment with this group being. Being the organization charged with providing us information to help us with our oversight of the special needs program. That, that's what I would ask. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go back to Doctor Miller and after Doctor Miller, I have a suggestion before I recognize anyone else on this topic. Uh, Doctor Miller.
In May of this year, Ms. Bowman did present a report on special ed and information from that committee. And prior to that, in April, Ms. Faison presented the plant, the five oh, uh, because they separated them. But uh, the five oh, four plans uh, uh, for the um, Prince George's County special needs population. So the documentation is out there. And again, it was presented to this board in May. One was presented by Ms. Bowman, who is the uh, uh. Instructional supervisor and uh, then another one by Ms. Faison on the five oh, four plans. So that information is there and Ms. Welch, you can follow up with your team, uh, with uh, Ms. Bowman and Ms. Faison. For the information that this, uh, these board members are requesting. But this group has been working collaboratively with the administration. And when they gave during a work session, they did make presentations um, relative to what this group is doing. And that's where those reports were, uh, their information was generated from um. Ms. Bowman and Ms. Faison's reports were generated as a part of that group.
Thank you, Doctor Miller. Um, as chair of this committee, I would like to recommend that we hold this item over. For further discussion where we can invite all the relevant parties to the next policy and governance committee meeting. So we can get a clear understanding of what exists and what doesn't exist. And if we need to fill in some gaps, we can do that. Clearly, uh, this is an issue of importance to the school district. But I also want to make sure that we are not um, creating extra work when we don't have to. So I would like this committee to be able to explore this further, uh, with some invitations going out. To those parties who are central to our understanding. So if I could entertain a motion from a member of the committee to bring this item back for further discussion.
A move that we bring this special, um, the special needs item back for uh, consideration and discussion. Um. Here, thank you.
Second.
There a second? It's been moved and seconded to bring this policy back for further discussion at the next policy and governance committee meeting. Are there any objections? Hearing none, Ms. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations tonight in regard to policy seventeen hundred. And bring this item back to the next policy and governance committee meeting for further discussion. And for hearing from the appropriate parties to further our understanding on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I move on to policy and I, and, and I, and I just want to say to everyone, this is a very long meeting. Board member Out.
Yes, I just wanted to, um, I rose my hand because I wanted to understand more about the structure. And so I'm, I'm not a member, a voting member of this committee, so I did, I could not provide any type of discussion. But I would like to provide um, a, an additional quest to understand what is the makeup of the committee. Because I think that's important in looking at the disability advisory committee as outlining uh, board policy seventeen hundred. Um, because is it, are their parents, are their teachers? I think that's important as well to understand uh, the makeup. So if uh, Ms. Welsh could also provide that, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you so much, Chair Fields.
Okay, I was gonna have a point of information.
Board member Adam Stafford.
Uh, yes, I just, uh, wanted to again, thank you all for allowing us to come speak this evening, you know, really. Uh, what uh, Doctor Miller mentioned as she spoke earlier. There have been presentations about special education from the administration. Um, but really what we're talking about is the board having an advisory committee that focuses on these issues. Um, as it stands right now, I know that a- as a board member. Um, I have not seen any information on, we have no oversight over what this committee is doing. With the administration. So there's a, a straight connection between that group and the administration, which is fantastic. And they're doing great advocacy work. I've actually been to um, one of their meetings. Um, but in terms of our work as board members who have a fiscal obligation, who are in charge of ensuring that. You know, at a systemic level, we are making policies that support special, students with special needs. We are kind of left out of that discussion and that's why, and, and we are the ones who are responsible to community members. Who have questions and have concerns about our policies. And so that is the reason why there needs to be um, a board that, an advisory group that reports to us as the board. And so, you know, I do thank you for this opportunity and I just would ask that um, we do look at, you know, how other similar, similarly situated districts. Um, provide this level of um, support and compliance with the law on this issue. Thank you so much.
And, and the purpose of bringing this back for further discussion is just that. Um, and I, and I. Um and I and I also want to state that as a board, we do have oversight. Uh we have oversight over our superintendent. So if there are ever any questions concerning any matters regarding the school district, we can um bring our superintendent before us and explain precisely uh where things are, because I don't want the public to think that we don't have any oversight um over this population. We do. Uh but I do understand the idea of trying to figure out if there is a better way to inform the board. And so that's what we will discuss at the next uh Policy and Governance Committee. Moving on, we're going to go to policy. Uh this discussion is closed on this item. We're moving on to point seven, Policy ninety-three sixty. Y'all thought I was playing when I said I was going to chair this committee. We we
Come on Walter, come on Walter. I'm just gonna give some information on the next meeting so that they gather some
We can, you're out of order, Dr. Miller. We're gonna move on.
He's out of order, but I apologize.
We're gonna move on to Policy ninety-three sixty, Meetings of the Board. I yield the floor uh to Ms. Welsh.
So um there are we, I was tasked with um sort of getting more information related to the idea that all of the uh board members could, if they wanted to attend the agenda setting meeting. And um actually um between myself and the Office of General Counsel, we not have the opportunity to do the research that we need to do. So I'm asking to bring it back. But in the meantime, I wanted to bring this up. I feel like this bylaw is so unwieldy that even for myself, when I'm looking for something, I feel like, where is it? I can't even find it. And I went back and I looked at other board, other counties like Montgomery County and Baltimore City to see they have a s- a section where they categorize all their policies under uh board governance. And um what they have done is that they have broken it up by a lot of different um they have different sections, like they have um, this is in, oh, this is in Rundle County where they have uh board quorum and rules of order. Then they have board executive sessions and then they have board meeting minutes and then they actually have board meetings. So that eh each this part, this bylaw would be broken up into these different sections. So that when you as board members are looking for the information that you need, like say you want to know information about a quorum or you want to know information about how we're doing the minutes or whatever it might be, that instead of trying to find your way through this big bylaw, it would be beneficial to have it broken up, broken up into smaller uh policies or bylaws that might make it easier for um for you to to operate. That is your call, but I wanted, I know it'll be coming back to you and I just wanted to know if that would be something that you might be interested in in having done.
I think I think that is a very good suggestion. I think we need to have policies that are clear and understandable. So I would ask one of my colleagues on the committee if they would um motion, provide a motion to continue this item for further discussion at our next Policy and Governance Committee meeting.
I move to
Board member Rivera Forbes, did you just make that motion?
I think being uh board member, Dr. Miller started at the same time.
Okay.
You go, you can go on and I'll second.
As a motion, do I have a second?
I seconded.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, uh please take this under advisement, Ms. Welsh, and bring Policy ninety-three sixty back to the next Policy and Governance meeting for further discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Please just let me inject this. Ms. Welch, please contact uh uh May because they did a workshop for all of the board members who attended. And it, there is a section in policy that speaks to agenda setting meetings. And I'll give it to you. I have it in my notes, so I just had to put that in there.
Oh, okay. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. And look, y'all, I'm I'm running out of my tea here, you know, so so we're gonna keep this, this movie. It's sweet tea. Thank you. Item five point zero, Items for Reviewer Action. There are two items tonight for uh reviewer action. First is Policy on Professional Development for Board Members. Colleagues may have a motion to forward the new policy, Professional Development for Board Members to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment.
I move that we move forward with the professional development, professional development for board members item. Um, oh, it doesn't have a policy number. To be moved forward to the full board.
Second.
Second, huh, good, thank you.
Been properly moved and seconded. Uh I'll now yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to give us an overview of the new policy.
So um basically, um the policy is um lays out the requirements that um now sit in um article, Education Article three dash one zero zero four, but was um included in the passage of House Bill ten seventy-nine. And um it requires, first of all, any new members when they first come into um come into um their position and they begin their term, that within uh one month of their terms commencement that they do attend orientation training. Um and actually, I will say that I did add the one month um as a as a um sort of a a like a timeline so that instead of months go by and they never had the orientation training, that we are getting the orientation training early on eh before, you know, they to get too involved in the um in their jobs, because I think that's critically important for them to uh have that training. And then uh in accordance to again with the law that they um provide, receive professional development annually in the following areas, community engagement, ethics, legal issues and education, parliamentary procedures, public education, budgeting and financing, role and responsibilities of the board and any other subject determined to be relevant by the board. Um and then at um in addition to that, that each year by December one, each board member submit a professional development disclosure statement. Again, this is all required by the law. So that uh lays out specifically what professional development they um they've completed during the entire school year. And I do know what the other change was. Um so I I did, maybe that was previously, but I did add the language so that board member is now defined and it says um um elected, appointed and the student board member. So that all the requirements are there for all board members um um no matter what, you know, it's required. So that is in the definition section. Um and then um the other thing is, is that uh there's disclosure statements have to be posted on the P G P S website by January thirtieth of each year. Um and then I did include that um when uh the in terms of receiving payment for registration fees, travel expenses as it relates to um the doing these trainings, that if in fact you're doing, you're going to a conference of whatever that addresses these issues, then um you can receive um payment for your travel expenses and everything and and conference fees. Um as long as you have the documentation to show that the that the conference did address these particular subject areas um that are required by law. So that's basically it for the um for this new policy on professional development.
Mr. Chair. My hand is up.
I will recognize Dr. Miller.
I just want the uh public to know and all the new new board members that every, all of the items that have been listed are presented every year by May, Maryland Association of Board of Education. Uh it's the sessions are usually seventy-five dollars and it's automatic, well, not automatically, but it is uh taken out of your expense account. And we can meet though, those, the board members can meet these requirements right at home or going to some other um conference. But I I have to promote what May does because they do a fantastic job in terms of the uh presentation of the documents and materials we need to be effective board members. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Colleagues, are there any objections to forwarding the new policy to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment? Hearing none, the motion passes, the policy will be will be moved to board.
Chair, I actually had a quick question.
Board member Rivera Forbes.
Thank you. I am so sorry, everyone. I'll be quick. Um my question was geared towards the professional development. I know um it was stated that they do cost money. Do all the things on on the list, like all of those are separate professional developments that have to be completed by December first?
It says, um, yes, it says that they are to be uh eh completed annually. I will say though that Dr. Miller is absolutely correct because I did get on Mabe's um Mabe's prof- their their site and look at all the professional development they offer and they have um a lot of professional developments uh that goes on throughout the year that does address most of these um items that are required by law.
Okay, I was just wondering, cause I'm considering um just, you know, the student member of the board's schedule again and to everything and how actively they are able to attend certain things and participate. So I'm wondering if that might possibly cause a conflict with just them attending everything, because we also have our own professional development strictly in student government as well, like learning parliamentary procedure, Roberts rules, um public speaking, just different things like that that we do.
Well, that's considered professional development. So
Okay.
Yeah, that's considered.
Board member Rivera Forbes, Chair, uh uh Dr. Miller, uh Board Member Rivera Forbes. This is sort of what can happen sometimes, the unintended consequences of of legislation, right? Because they are looking at board members and may not have factored into consideration the student member of the board. So that's a conversation that I think we can have uh with our legislative leadership. Uh because the idea certainly isn't to overburden uh the student member of the board. We just want to make sure that you um have access to uh professional development that will allow you to uh serve more effectively as a board member. So um I will take that under advisement and we'll try to get some clarification, because I don't think that was the legislative intent. I think the intent was to make sure that board members were um taking advantage of professional development opportunities to increase uh their capacity as board members.
Thank you.
No problem. So the policy will be moved to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment. Moving on to Agenda Item five point two, Policy ninety-two fifty, Attorneys. Colleagues may have a
Chair Fields, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I wanted to say, so the the law does not say that student mem- it doesn't reference the student, it's well, it says elected board members, which the student member is an elected board member, but it doesn't reference specifically the student board member. We, I made that change last a month because of the request. Um the rain asked about ensuring that she had the opportunity to. And then we had talked about, should it be just, even though the law says elected, shouldn't it be appointed and elected? So I thought for clarity's sake, just putting as a definition, but I could make some type, I'm not sure what, but some change into the language so that it doesn't necessarily um uh hold the same requirements. I guess though, if you interpreted the law as saying elected means a student board member too, then they would be required. So I'm I'm I'm, we didn't, it wasn't that clear prior to me putting the definition in, so that's all I'm saying.
Well, I think we can work on that language and then check in with the legislative leadership to make certain that they understand that we're trying to uh follow the law. But a valid point has been raised about um our student member of the board.
I don't think they gave any consideration to a legal.
Well, they did. I mean, as I said, this is unintended consequences. They they passed the law without thinking about the student member of the board. Policy ninety-two fifty, Item five point two on our agenda tonight. Colleagues may have a motion to forward or vice policy ninety-two fifty, Attorneys to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment.
So moved only because I cannot um recall what you just said, but I'm so moved.
This is Policy ninety-two fifty, Attorneys.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and I'll yield the floor to Ms. Welsh for an overview of Policy ninety-two fifty.
Um so um first of all, that um um the Office of General Counsel recommend that I change the title from attorney to legal counsel. So I have made that change. If that, if you don't want that changed, we can certainly go back to what it was before, but I did put in legal counsel. And um the changes that I did make based on um Mr. Whitley's recommendation, I did put a definition in for defend. And then I also incorporated language that talked about um the fact that um the board is the if that's, well, and what I shared last time was that there would be um and our people would go out and then um the the idea would be that the board would end up with five pre-approved um or pre-qualified uh like attorneys or law firms that would be available to um serve, you know, um serve a person who needs to have a defense uh that's sitting on the board. And uh the, I think the critical piece was is that the law was very clear. It was the board's responsibility to retain the attorney. But the question did come up, what if the board member wants to use their own uh law firm or their own attorney uh of their choosing? Um and so I did put that in that it that can happen, but that the majority of the board must vote of um to prove such an exception. However, the language does uh also in in the, as you go further on, talks about the fact though that um if it, if the um the attorney um the the requirement, if you're not going to follow that though, then there is um and not use the people that um um that this board has identified, then the um person would be um subject to um covering the attorney's fees. Um however, Mr. Whitley, do you want to jump in and talk about where you think we should make a change in that language? You talked to me, I forget where you put, said it, but could you uh give us feedback on that, please? Is he still on?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Okay. If you're talking about uh number seven.
Yes.
Is the board will not pay the fees for an attorney, for any board member who's the plaintiff in litigation. Uh I believe it should say typically the board will not pay the fees for an attorney who, for any board member who's a plaintiff in litigation. Because as we discussed, there are situations where you may have to be a plaintiff to protect your interests. Uh there's a new definition of defend. There may be a situation where if there's an administrative process, you may have to go to court to get a declaratory judgment or the court to declare what the proper uh procedure is for that administrative process. And in that situation, you would be a plaintiff. Um but the, by having a blanket restriction, you're limiting the attorney's ability to zealously zealotly advocate for his client. And I don't think any board member would want to be in a situation where their attorneys uh trying to represent them with one hand tied behind their back. So we can put in the word typically and it would make it clear that the uh rule that it would be the board's rule that they would not typically want to pay attorney's fees for plaintiffs. But there are situations where, you know, there are exceptions to every rule, no rule, no rule is absolute.
Mr. Chair, my hand is up.
Oh, oh, I I see a hand, Dr. Miller. Just hold up, please. Are you finished, Mr. Mr. Whit?
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Miller.
Um I'm concerned that this wording typically uh is um is abroad. It opens the door for for um um, how can I put it? It oh, it it, well, it it's either may or shall, not typically. And what does typically mean? Cause what is to, you have to define typically. And I really have some concerns with that. And then uh in number seven, it says the board will not pay the fees or expenses for an attorney for any board member who is the plaintiff in litigation. The whole thing with uh ten seventy-nine is about defense and litigation. And we have a uh issue now with this board, which are all the, uh this policy committee needs to really look at the these changes um that are being recommended in terms of payment. And uh Mr. Whitley um just gave some legal jargon that can be uh I call it legal jargon because it can be confusing to a non um non-legal uh minds, non-legal astute uh members of our board. Uh and uh I uh I think that this committee needs to hold, I'm asking that we hold off on this because I would like to have further review uh with the general counsel and any other legal coun- uh legal advisors uh uh in this matter. Uh I think there's a door being opened uh that can be costly to this board and it has been demonstrated. So this is not the form to discuss it, but I am going to put on the table to the public. Um I have major concern and I would like uh this board to have further and uh additional uh commentary on on these uh expense uh e- expenses. And the co- and in the bill itself, because see, we've expanded more than what's in the bill. The bill clearly talks about defend and litigation. And the way Mister uh Mister um Whitley just explained that, I mean, he turned that whole thing around to make. What can be a plaintiff's um issue. A defense issue and it's playing with the public. Uh as I see it, and I'm just being very candid about it. So I have some real major concerns. And I will have this looked at outside of Prince George County Board of Education Legal Counsel. Because that's what I see happening here. So that's that's um. I I'm asked, I'm mo- making a motion to table.
Hold your motion, Doctor Miller, until we can complete discussion on this and I'll call for a motion. Uh uh Board Member uh Walker.
Thank you so much. You know, I am very concerned at the precedent we're setting here and I'm excited that we are talking about this in a policy and governance committee. So we can make a determination on where we want to move forward and this is the right committee for it. I um. I really want us to think about not only the precedent that we are setting, but also what comes in front of the Board of Education for approval. We are the Board of Education and we can approve what moves forward by way of. Um litigation and what's gonna and who is gonna support what. And the reason is because our council supports the Board of Education, not individual members. And I just want to make sure that we are very compliant. In a notion that we have hired an outside entity to represent us as a collective board versus individual. Um plaintiffs um that have been identified. And I just want to make sure that that comes to the board. So in whatever policy we are deriving, I want to make sure that we say that we have the approval. We, the Board of Education, has the approval for what is moving forward and we have a vote on that. In the absence of a vote on that, we we have it, we have an issue. Um because we are a collective board. And so I just want to make sure that that hits the policy of what we are talking about. And that we can move forward in that same vein. Um so as we are talking today and we are putting out our personal opinions without any feedback. Because we're just giving it as opinions for consideration as we move forward for it to come back for any discussion and action. I just want to make sure that that hits um that aspect right there. So we can make sure that as the Board of Education, as we talked about earlier. That we have governing body of what comes before us and what we take motion on and what is able to be um. Actioned upon by way of our vote. And so that's just really, really, really important as we move forward to ensure consistency and compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I see Mister Whitley's hand raised again.
Just wanted to say quickly that the purpose of the amendment is, again, if you're. If a board member is defending themselves, you cannot tie one hand behind their back. The attorney may feel as though they have to get a judicial determination as to a board statute. And if they were to do that, they would be a plaintiff. But the purpose for them being a plaintiff is defending themselves. That's why the definition of defend was added to the statute. The purpose of ten seventy-nine was to provide board members a defense. And sometimes in defending yourself, you may have to be a plaintiff to protect your interests or limit your liability. So I just wanted to make sure that that I wanted to try to make it that clear to the board. I know Board Member Miller said I was using uh legal jargon. Hopefully, um I was able to explain that without the legal jargon so that everybody could understand. Of the amendment.
Thank you, uh.
I disagree with it and I'm going to have it reviewed. I apologize.
Doctor Miller, you're out of order.
So I won't be rude.
So um this is an important policy for this board. Um and it's been a cause of much stress and dissension, and I want to make sure we get this right. So um I would advise that we bring this back before this committee. For further clarification, language cleanup, for advisement if necessary from. Uh the Office of the Attorney General, but I want to get this right. Because I think it has been um a problem that has festered. And it has interrupted the business of this board. So I would ask for a motion from uh one of my colleagues on the committee. To bring this item back at the next Policy and Governance Committee for further discussion. An invitation of necessary parties to bring clarity to this matter. And for revised language so that we are clear what the law says, what this policy will do. And that we are in alignment with the law as passed.
Mister Fields, I will make a motion after I make, if if you can, if you can acknowledge my hand before I make the motion. Which is up, but if you don't, then I'll still make the motion, but I would like to um acknowledge my hand. Either way, I'm all in.
I I will annou- I will acknowledge you for this comment. I am mindful that it is nine P.
Yeah, you, I mean, seriously, I'm studying for an exam. So it's very quick. There is no way and know-how that I would ever believe that. Um any action can be done on our board without a board vote. And therefore, I want to make a motion. That we bring this back to the board for future acknowledgement and discussion. Of this particular um discussion we're having on this policy so that we can be very clear when we come back. I don't know if that's clear enough, but I think it is.
So the motion is to bring this item back before the full board for discussion.
Oh, no, back before this board.
Cause we're not quite aligned.
One person, please.
I'll I'll go ahead. No worries, Doctor uh Miller, unless I don't get it right. I think that the um for sure, for my amendment, it is that we bring this particular issue back to this board. With what we have been talked about tonight for Miss Welsh. Thank you, Laura, for you, Miss Welsh. That you are capturing all of exactly what we're talking about tonight. For us, for final discussion before it is taken to the board. So the action should be for us to bring it back here for action to take to the board, um Mister Fields.
So bring it back to the policy and governance.
Yes, thank you so much. For the final review, to be clear for the notes, Miss um Adeline. And.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Miss Welsh.
Uh I just want to also put, since we're talking about language that people are happy with or not happy with. I feel like I better point one other piece of language out so that you're, so so that if we're getting clarification, we're all clear about everything. So that it, so the law is saying that the board itself must retain the attorney for the person who needs to be defended. And then they pay all the expenses for that attorney. So my, so because the law says that, I did add language that says that. Um uh the board will not pay the fees or expenses for an attorney that the board member retained. And that is new language. I I when we were looking at this, I said, oh, I forgot to tell you this, but I want to tell you this because I. Uh they question came up about the fact that some people might want to retain their own. Um but the fact is, is that um it then we're not in a compliance with the law from the standpoint of the count. The the board didn't retain this attorney, someone just went out and picked their attorney to have done. So I wanted to just say that so that you all, as a committee, can discuss that too.
Okay, it's it's been properly moved and seconded to bring this item back to the Policy and Governance Committee. Uh meeting for the next Policy Governance Committee meeting for further discussion. Are there any objections?
There's not an objection, just a quick discussion. Didn't we say in our last committee meeting that. Um we shifted the language, which you already did on this call right here. Didn't you do that in the beginning part? I feel like, Miss Welsh. Like you talked about the shifting of um. Wasn't it, maybe it was last meeting, but I felt like you talked about the shifting of um the discussion of. Uh when when we can get an attorney and when we can't, no?
She did.
Yeah, I felt like you, we we talked about that at the last meeting and you.
So so point of order.
Okay, thank you.
Been properly moved and seconded, this item will be brought back to the next Policy and Governance Committee meeting for further discussion. And at that time, um please be prepared to ask any questions that you did not get the chance to ask this evening. Item six point zero, committee recommendations. New Business Governance, Geographic Boundaries of Attendance Areas and Consolidation Closure of Schools. Policy Geographic Boundaries of Attendance Areas and the Consolidation Closure of Schools was voted on by the full board to seek public comment. No public comments were received. Colleagues, I'd like to have a motion to forward to the full board the new policy with the recommendation for advanced consideration. At first reader at the next Board of Education meeting.
I move, Mister Chair, that the Policy on Geographic Boundaries of Attendance Areas and the Consolidation. Slash Closure of Schools uh be moved to the next uh step.
Is there a second?
Yes, slowly to Walker second, thank you.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The policy will be moved to the full board with recommendation to advance consideration. As first reader. Agenda item six point two, policy five one two, five point four, informed consent student data gathering. Policy five one two, five point four, informed consent student data gathering was voted on by the full board to seek public comment. No public comments were received. Colleagues, I'd like to have a motion to forward to the full board policy five one two, five point four. With a recommendation for advanced consideration as first reader at the next Board of Education meeting.
So move, Mister Chair.
It has been moved and seconded. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to advance consideration as first reader. Agenda item six point three, policy five one six eight, Automated External Defibrillators. Policy five one six eight, Automated External Defibrillators was voted on by the full board to seek public comment. No public comments were received. Colleagues, I'd like to have a motion to forward to the full board policy five one six eight. With the recommendation for advanced consideration as first reader at the next Board of Education meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
First I need a, first I need a motion. I'm sorry.
That we move forward with uh policy fifty-one sixty-eight on automatic automated. External defibrillators.
Second.
Is there a second?
Mister Briggs, second.
Mister Briggs, did you second?
Second. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to advance consideration as first reader. Then the item seven point zero, follow-ups to next steps. Uh follow-ups from previous meetings will be posted on board docs upon receipt. The next Policy and Governance Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at five P M. This meeting will be virtual. Please check the PG CPS Board webpage for more information. I just have one final closing remark. We started this meeting at five o'clock. It is now nine oh seven. Uh this has been a very long meeting, but it we have taken up some very serious matters. Um I want the public to know that uh we are doing the business of this board. I also want you to know that when you hear us say no public comments were received. That is a reflection that we are not engaged enough. Uh these are important policy matters and I would hope that when these items come up and you have the opportunity to comment. To the board at a board meeting, that you do so. Uh because we want to make sure, as I said early in this meeting when it was still the afternoon, that we want you to be a partner with us. Um in making our school district a success. I'll recognize Miss Adeline's hand, her is raised.
And I I just wanted to add that um I know administrative staff are not really allowed to mention anything on meetings, but I just wanted to say that. We have, well, with the help of Miss Welsh and Mister Fields, the policy development process, we have placed that on the website. If anyone want to track the steps to getting a policy enacted, it's now on the website.
Thank you, Miss Adeline. And I I also just want to thank our staff. It's Adeline who makes sure that these meetings um are conducted efficiently, is Welsh for her expertise. Uh want to thank our board counsel. We have to work as a team in this school district to do the work of the school district. I want to thank the superintendent for joining us this evening and Chief of Staff, Chris Boyd. And certainly our former student member of the board, uh Alvaro Sarun Ruiz, who we are very proud of. And he looked a little different tonight. I saw a mustache and a little boutique, so whoa, like, okay.
And a new haircut.
Hey, you know, that freshman year does a body good, you know, so he's he's. We we love to see him. Um so folks, thank you for the public that was watching tonight. Thank you, my. Committee members and the board members who joined us. Um may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mister Chair.
Second, third, fourth.
Moving seconded to adjourn the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three policy and governance meeting.
Right? Doesn't he look different?
In any objections, got your, are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Good night. The time is now nine ten.
Uh thank you. Good night, good night. We gotta have fun on here, Walter. I mean.
He's still recording, she's still recording.
Bye, everyone.